It is now five o'clock, January 15, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox? Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 54954.3. State law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I do not see anyone in the audience that would like to address the Council, therefore, may we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two closed session items. No, there are three closed sessions. I beg your pardon. Your agenda is set up a little different than I'm used to. The first closed session, uh... First closed session item is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property location northeast of Southern California Logistics Airport at northeast corner of Calusa and Helendale Road. Assessors' parcel numbers are listed below. City negotiators Sophie Smith, Deputy City Manager or authorized designee. Negotiating parties HDSI LLC, a subsidiary of Middle River Power LLC, under negotiation price and terms of payment lease. The second item, which is for the SCLA A, is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The property location northeast of Southern California Logistics Airport at northeast corner of Calusa and Helendale Road. Assessors' parcel numbers are listed. City negotiators Sophie Smith, Deputy City Manager or authorized designee. Negotiating parties HDSI LLC, subsidiary of Middle River Power LLC, under negotiation primes, uh, price and terms of payment lease. Those are the only two items, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to our closed session, and a regular session convenes at 6:00 PM. It is now, uh, 6:00 PM, January 15, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
At this time, can we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no reportable actions from this evening's closed session.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the invocation, and it will be delivered by Lake and Tor Elizabeth Payne of Congregation, um, DeBar, and the pledge of allegiance to be led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger, so please stand.
Oh guardian of life and liberty, may our nation always merit your protection. Teach us to give thanks for what we have by sharing it with those who are in need. Keep our eyes open to the wonders of creation and alert to the care of the earth. May we never be lazy in the work of peace. May we honor those who have died in defense of our ideals. Grant our leaders wisdom and forbearance. May they govern with justice and compassion. Help us all to appreciate one another and to respect the many ways that we may serve you. May our homes be safe from affliction and strife, and our country be sound in body and spirit. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, uh, we have a presentation by our city manager to the City Council, uh, 2018 accomplishments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mayor and members of the council, um, this is our first meeting back for the new year, and so I wanted to take this opportunity to say Happy New Year. And I wanted to also take this opportunity to reflect a little bit, uh, with you about 2018. This last December, I had the opportunity, it was the third opportunity throughout the last calendar year where I actually, uh, got to meet with all of the employees, and I've had regular meeting sessions with the employees. And in this last December, uh, it was largely focused on, uh, all that we accomplished together, uh, over 2018 as a team. And I did that i- in large part because I think we're used to, uh, reading the headlines and seeing the headlines and, and perhaps hearing about only, uh, the big things, uh, that are going on in town. So, uh, what I did wanna share with you, which is similar to what I shared with the staff, was all of the things that we accomplish. And so I've got a slideshow that will run in the background while, while I'm speaking to show a number of the special projects that all of the different departments participate in that makes our great city, uh, great. But I will tell you, uh, while that's going on, is it?
Cue it up.
Go ahead and cue that up. Um, so while that's going on, um, you know, I, I did share with the staff, um, my optimism about 2019 going forward, and, and in large part, it's because so many big issues, uh, this City Council and this city had overcome. Uh, and in fact, it's, even though I've shared with the staff that 2018 was a really good year, I will tell you as a council, beyond that, uh, I actually reflecting over the last 10 years, certainly 2018 was the best year we've had in at least 10 years, uh, as a city. A lot of good things going on, and in large part because a lot of that negativity that we're used to reading about, particularly involving a number of the litigation matters that we've been involved in, they're done. Uh, we've dealt with some very difficult fiscal, uh, matters, uh, this last year in an election year, which is, which usually not very popular to do, uh, but this council took that on, and successfully we got through those, uh, those issues. Um, to the point where we were actually, uh, in the case of SCLA bonds, able to celebrate at the end of the year by remembering the, the negative history over the last 10 years and seeing that our ratings on those bonds have actually been upgraded now that defaults have been cured. So, the City Council is exposed to those big issues, uh, but also, um, these are, uh, an illustration of all of the exciting things that your dedicated 430 employees do every day, uh, and, and are proud to be a part of. Uh, but also what I had an opportunity to do, and I encourage, um, uh, I look forward to meeting with you all on an individual basis, what we did share with the staff is, um, how we've gotten together as a leadership group, all the department heads, including the exec- executive team member, uh, team members have gotten together and start focusing on organizational goals, uh, going forward. Now that we've got so much of that, uh, a difficultness, that difficult stuff behind us, we're able to focus on how to organize our, um, organization better, do things more effective, do things more efficient. So, a, a number of those things that we have focused on so far involve improving customer service, um, and, and hopefully you've seen that, we're certainly looking forward to, to more of that. But as we've characterized customer service, um, it's not, from our perspective, not just what you see in the customer service line, um, here at City Hall, uh, but it's how we interact with the public when it comes to development services. Um, one thing that's been key, um, is the, um, investment in our website technology where we actually encourage complaints and make it easier for complaints to come in, and we actually respond. Uh, we do believe as staff that, uh, our responsiveness to, uh, complaints is improved tremendously thus, this last year. And we're actually looking to, um, advance that further as we, uh, introduce some new, uh, goals, uh, going forward. One of the, uh, goals that we've looked at, uh, as staff and established is collaboration more amongst departments. And, and what that means, it means a lot of things, but I'll give you an example. Um, there's so many technical things that, uh, the, a lot of the divisions do that perhaps the public doesn't understand, uh, and perhaps not even us as staff understand. Uh, we're actually working on a program called Victorville 101 where it would be a program internally for staff so we can educate, uh, our own members to know what is the purchasing process, or what in fact is a code, uh, violation, uh, issue. We have so many people working for this organization that are out on the street, uh, seeing things. Uh, we want to be a part of trying to make the community better, so if, we believe if our staff knows the code better, uh, whether it's purchasing code or, or just, uh, uh, community-related codes, um, we can actually help, uh, make the community better and perhaps be a little bit more proactive to, to citizen issues as opposed to, to being, uh, reactive. Um, one of the things that we're also looking forward to is reconnecting with the community a little bit better. The concept that we're, uh, working on right now is, uh, perhaps three, maybe four times, uh, this year, uh, doing what's called the community barbecue where we actually get back out into the community, um, with all of the divisions represented, whether it's code enforcement, purchasing, human resources, what have you, uh, where we can actually go out to the community, reconnect with the community, be able to answer any possible question, take on any possible complaint, and, uh, at least establish a face-to-face connection with, with our residents as opposed to, to how it goes, um, how it's been going with respect to phone calls and emails. Um, so with that, I, I wanted to share that with you. The goals part of it, I want to meet with you one-on-one and talk that through in greater detail, um, to make sure we're all on the same page. But I will tell you, as I've shared with the staff, uh, the organization is excited about, uh, the vision that our leadership, uh, has developed and looking forward to being a part of, uh, those, those goals. And I think I do want to conclude by just saying, thank you, um, as a council, you're a very, uh, critical, uh, support to what we do. Without your support, uh, we can't do all of what you've seen up here, uh, nor could we, uh, have the ability to tackle some of the very difficult issues that we've tackled, uh, over the years. So, uh, with that, uh, I just wanted to share that with you. It's a lot of, uh, similar information I shared with the staff, though with the staff, I had about 45, 50 minutes, and I wanted to be respectful of your time, uh, so I just gave you a little bit of a thumbnail, but I can do, uh, a lot more detail one-on-one. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, at this time, um, our city clerk will, uh, present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the participation in tonight's meeting. Please silence your cell phones. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete a white speaker card located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearings, written communications, or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, we do not have any appeal hearings this evening, uh, therefore, we will be moving on to, um, public hearings. And, uh, item number one, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against a municipal code amendment and a conditional use permit with environmental exemptions to allow the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption at the Mall of Victor Valley Cinemark Theater. Madam Clerk, uh, read the recommendation.
That the City Council find the municipal code amendment and conditional use permit exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, introduce and waive further reading of ordinance number 2387 approving the code amendment, and adopt resolution number 19-001 approving the conditional use permit.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff, uh, by council members, and you have a two-minute time limit? I'll start with Ms. Jones.
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor, but I was under the impression that the proponent...
Uh, we'll get to that part of it.
I make a motion to deny the continuance.
Uh, at this time, it's questions of staff?
Sure.
I don't have, we're not at... Any questions?
I do, Madam Mayor.
I didn't follow the discussion that was occurring, Madam Mayor, if you would...
Yeah, well, right now, I'm just asking if there are any questions of staff by council members, and they have a two-minute time limit.
Okay.
This is questions of staff.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Webb, how are you?
Good evening.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Very good. All right, um, first of all, I'm quite confident that our planning commission did its due diligence, and I thank you and the commission as well for that strong effort, but I do have a few questions. Um, one question I've asked of every candidate for the planning commission is this, how do you balance the needs of developers with the, with the needs of the public's health, safety, and welfare? So, on this particular item, I'm finding myself asking the same question, and so I'm gonna ask it to you. How do you do that as it relates to this issue?
Well, uh, this item was actually proposed by an applicant, it wasn't staff-initiated. Our current code does not allow, or does not have provisions for alcohol sales within theaters. Um, so, as it first came before the planning commission, uh, we were first trying to get a read from them if they even wanted to consider reviewing, uh, municipal code amendment. Um, they gave direction to allow the applicant to move forward with that approval, w- with that, um, proposal. In November of this past year, it went forward as a public hearing, and when staff reviews the proposal, we, what we do to balance the, the, the needs of the development community and impacts to, um, to the public health, safety, and welfare, we do look at other cities. We see what other cities are, uh, are reviewing and approving, um, what operating conditions other cities have held these, uh, facilities to, and we give the planning commission options. Uh, this is a, a policy decision. Um, it's not currently in our code, so a lot of, uh, the weight comes before the planning commission and city council to determine if, if this is something that the city actually wants to proceed with. Fortunately, I'm not coming before you with a unanimous recommendation from the planning commission, but it was a, a three-two, uh, split vote in support of the current proposal that's before you. Um, and what it lays out is first a municipal code amendment that would allow only beer and wine within theaters. Uh, the, the planning commission in considering this and making sure to weigh those options, um, did include additional operating conditions that aren't held, um, by most cities. Um, that included requiring a wristband system, uh, limiting the drinks to three, uh, maximum. And then there were, the third one included, um... Uh, limiting sales, uh, only to midnight. So, those were additional, um, and the Alcohol Beverage Control Board had already some operating standards, the staff looked into that as well and included those, um, in the proposal before you.
Okay, thank you. And then not that all revenue is equal in my book, um, how much revenue for the city is projected from the sale of alcoholic beverages at Cinemark 16?
I believe that applicants here, and they could shed light on that, I'm not aware of the actual breakdown.
Applicant's not here tonight, is that correct?
The, the applicant is here, um, but they do, they are requesting a continuance, uh, due to the fact that they're, um, the specialist from the Alcohol Department of the Cinemark, uh, Corporation couldn't be here today. And so they're requesting a continuance to February 5th.
Okay, and then with regard to the code amendment, Cinemark has an, um, as I understand, they haven't applied to serve distilled spirits, um, at the mall location, but am I correct that having, um, the code amended would then allow other applicants to apply to sell distilled spirits at other locations?
No, what's before you today is, is, uh, strictly a code amendment that will only allow beer and wine. That was, period. There, and there's specific alcohol beverage licenses that would limit them to only beer and wine as well.
Okay. And with regard to the conditional use permit, um, it, it doesn't, I, at least I didn't see it, it doesn't indicate that every consumer will be ID'd, as was my belief from the planning commission presentation, um, so I don't see that in there. Um, can it be added? And, um, the other thing that I noticed is it doesn't define, there's a restriction on beer for 16 ounces per purchase, but not on the wine.
You have 30 seconds?
Yes, so the, the ID scan was a option that, that Cinemark discussed at the November hearing, um, but it was not included as the condition. Um, it can be added if, um, the council so desires to add a ID scan, uh, the applicant could probably shed some more light on that, that process, um, that, but that was not included. Um, and also, um, s- the, the question about wine, at, the maximum, uh, pour for a wine, that's not included as well, and that came from ABC standards.
Right.
Uh, where they only addressed the maximum, um, pour for a, a beer, which would be 16 ounces.
And certainly the council, though, could move to make a restriction on that if it shows...
The council, yeah, the, and also ABC doesn't preclude the city from adding additional restrictions.
Okay, and...
Okay, your two minutes are up. Your two minutes.
Thirty seconds left? Thirty seconds?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one seconds left. Let me make it quick. Thank you. Um, so, the only restriction that I see in the hours was it was originally requested till 1:00 AM, and then it kicked it back one hour. Um, the council certainly could restrict that further.
Yes.
Thank you.
May I ask questions as well?
Yes, you may.
I would like to know, your statement that, in the documents that I read, said, everyone is, everyone else is doing it so, uh, that should be a reason for the City Council to consider the approval of changing the code and giving a permit. I find that rather weak as a reasoning. Secondly, I question the supervision. I did not read anything regarding minor rights. Adults have the right to drink at home, restaurants, and bars. Children and minors do not. Minors and children have rights, and the question is, what have you provided in regards to, uh, health and safety for young people? Now, this is going to be, uh, a question of approval, eh, for a theater in a mall. Therefore, this is, uh, to me, even greater and more important than, than, than the theater itself. For you to have alcohol, you have to prove that you are a restaurant. And I cannot understand that the selling of popcorn, hot dogs, would equate that to a menu that would make you a restaurant and permit the privilege of having beer and wine in a public place for children are. Now, I find it very difficult...
You have 30 seconds?
Thank you. I find it very difficult because, uh, we have met with the public, and we just received a while ago a continuance about, uh, having this being discussed again in February. So, my question is, how did you come about with a vote of three to two on this issue?
Well, thank you for the questions.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just to be helpful, because, because I think some of the questions seem to be pointed directly to Scott. Um, in, in, I wanna make sure it's not a personal issue towards Scott, because Scott, in the role of city planner, um, is actually carrying forward an actual recommendation based upon a deliberative action of the planning commission. So, the, the, what he's bringing forward is, is the actual action from the planning commission, uh, after their, having already discussed it and talked it through. A lot of your questions actually seem more oper- operational in nature that, as much as I think Scott could answer, I think to, to be appropriate here, their, uh, answers probably more, uh, better ans- answered, if you will, poor, poor English, uh, from Cinemark themselves, not, not the city planner.
I can't s- uh, shed some light, though, on, on the distinction between a restaurant and how that kinda is brought into the equation. Our city municipal code regulates restaurants differently than what would be the, a movie theater if, if this is actually approved. The regulations where food is supposed to be served, that comes from the Alcohol Beverage Control Board, which included standard operating conditions for, for theaters statewide that says that you need to serve food. Um, so that's, that's where the restaurant, um, comes into play. As far as, um, this proposal just being at the mall, it is, the conditional use permit is for the mall itself. The, the, the first item is for the code amendment itself, which would, uh, conditionally allow beer and wine for any theater in the city if they so choose to apply for it. Um, that's, that could be at the movie Stanoff, Ameriposa, or, or a future movie theater that, that hasn't built yet.
I do have a question. The prohibition is for the theater, not the mall, because right now, you can have different uses. Sports bars, I notice all the conditions about children and all this stuff in sports bars, but, but, if so, if there was a sports bar at the mall, it would be handled different than the request for the theater to have alcohol.
Correct, so our current municipal code for a, a restaurant, um, if they're just selling beer and wine, it's a permitted use within a cond- within a, uh, commercial district. If they're selling beer, wine, and distilled spirits, it does require a conditional use permit. Uh, the mall does have, um, some, some of the people within the food court that, that do sell alcoholic beverages. Um, also, uh, Red Robin on the same site has it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, who brought this appeal to council? And if the CUP was already approved three to two in the planning, why is it being heard here? And if we are asking for a continuance, how does it affect a motion to continue to February 5th, when we're having the hearing today? Should there be a motion made right now?
Uh, thank you for the question. First off, this isn't an appeal. Um, what, what we do is we package these together when there's a code amendment associated with it. So, um, in order for the conditional use permit to be approved, the council will first have to approve a municipal code amendment. So, that conditional use permit's contingent upon, first, the council approving a code amendment.
So, who brought the appeal? Not the consultant?
There's not, there's not an appeal before you today. There's not, there's not an appeal before you today. This is a public hearing.
Okay, so then I'm not understanding, because if it was approved three to two, why is it coming to council? Oh, you just said it, it's because it's, we need to modify the money code.
It was a recommendation of the Planning Commission to the City Council to recommending the modification to our current code.
Well, luckily, our weekly community meetings that are held by myself and a lot of community members had the privilege of having the consultant answer a lot of these questions that actually council has. So we were privileged, so we have a couple, a few prepared individuals that actually know from left to right what's happening with the different things that we have in front. So I'd just like to display, anyone who has questions, always make sure that you're a part of what's happening. We have community meetings and I think this community meeting that we had December seventeenth really was vested in giving the community that why yes or why not and those precautionary things that if children were around, what would it mean to them? And that's all I have.
Okay. Well, I think that's all that we have as far as questions of staff. Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do have some cards. There are quite a few cards, so I will limit the time limit to two minutes instead of the three minutes. And I will start with Cameron.
I think it's G R A R B U T T.
Is that you over there? Oh, he's coming.
Name is close, there we go. Here it comes.
No? Is there a Cameron in the house? No? I'll put it aside for now then. Oh, you are? Okay. It's two minutes. After Cameron, it will be Elliot or Cage, I believe that's.
Good evening, council members. My name is Cameron Garbutt. And I don't really like talking in front of large groups, but when my parents, my parents said, if this ordinance is passed, I will not be allowed to go to the movies without adult supervision. So I had to at least try, so. We don't have anything else to do except go to the mall and to the movies out here, really. But me and my friends, we were talking about this whole thing and how it doesn't make any sense because we're not, we're told not to say no to drugs and don't drink and drive. But then with the next breath, we're throwing it in our face everywhere we turn. What is it going to take for people to choose what is best interest of our community and our kids? Instead of the bottom line of a multi-billion dollar cooperation, you say we are the future, but instead of making the places we go more safe, we are appealing to you, but not to make it worse. Just like with marijuana, the more accessible alcohol is, the more teenage use will go up. And I heard that they're going to be selling it right next to the arcade.
You have thirty seconds?
I mean, really, like you can't be serious. The bottom line is there are other theaters people can go to if they want to drink alcohol. This is the movies that we go to the most. And please don't allow the Cinemark to sell alcohol in our theater. Thank you.
Can we save our clap until the end? I have quite a few cards. Elliot, the Cage, and then after him or her, Don Quigg.
Hello, council members. I don't, I don't, I don't like the thought that there is alcohol being sold in our at our theaters that I like to go to the most with my friends. If this passes, I won't be able to go to the movies anymore, alone by myself, but not with my friends or my family either. When I take my younger siblings or my cousins to the movies, I don't want them to see that other people are drinking. I don't want them to grow, I don't want them to grow and say, oh, that's cool. I don't want them to go to their friends and say, hey, I drink alcohol. I'm the coolest on the block. I don't want them, I don't want that to happen. Alcohol is, like my friend, brother Cameron said, alcohol is already being sold in other places. I don't know why they would choose the theaters to sell it. I don't want to be in the movies. I don't want to be in the movies with my friends or with a date. And I, and I, um, see a guy with alcohol just drinking, probably, probably torn up behind me the most. Just like marijuana, it will be way more easier to access teenagers and whatnot.
You have thirty seconds?
If I came home drunk and my parents asked, where did you get that alcohol from? And I said the movies, first, I would not be allowed to go to the movies. Second, they were probably discipling me in a rather aggressive way. And I don't want that. I don't like getting beaten. So no alcohol. And bottom line.
Your time is up?
Oh, bottom line, I don't want alcohol.
Okay, next is Don Quigg, and after Don, Brenda Landry.
Hello. In this day of consistent media growth, expansion and change, we can see how theaters have introduced new experience to remain a viable place of entertainment. All of us can go home tonight and turn on our TV to Netflix, Hulu, Amazon, et cetera. In response to this, reality movie theaters have introduced plush seating, expanded menus and the introduction of alcoholic product into the theater environment to seemingly remain competitive and hopefully to grow their customer base and increase revenue. The cost for these movie experiences has, and with the introduction of alcohol, will escalate. And in a city where income has not increased at the same rate for families and our youth population, many are priced out of the movie experience. Why the emphasis on youth and family? Several reasons. Our youth and young adults are primary workers at the movie theaters, which has long been a good thing. There is not an abundance of family-friendly experience in the Victorville area. For that matter, an affordable place for our youth to have a date or a safe place to congregate that parents feel comfortable with. And how many of us can remember our dates or meeting of friends at the movies? This movie theater is attached to the Victor Valley Mall, which is one of these places that is, few places that is family and unaccompanied minor friendly. What concerns me is that at the eleven fourteen eighteen Planning Commission meeting, Cinemark verbally offered to begin negotiations with a two-drink sixteen-ounce each per movie ticket limit. The Planning Commission suggested three drinks, sixteen-ounce each per each movie ticket from ten AM to twelve PM.
You have thirty seconds?
And that proposal is what we see. Our basic movie experience per movie ticket encompasses approximately two point five hours with the trailer and the movie itself. Knowing that people process alcohol differently, I ask you to consider what state of inebriation you would be, personally be experiencing at three sixteen-ounce beers in a two point five-hour window. Beers that range from four point oh to seven point five alcohol level. You may say, I would not drink nor drink that much, but what about individuals who do?
Your time is up?
And there we go.
No, I'm sorry, we can't do that.
Then here, start right here.
Good evening, my name is Brenda Landry and I'm a teacher at Adelanto High School. And I'm here this evening with a group of students who want to protest this serving alcohol at the mall because they wish to have a safe environment where they can go and be themselves and be safe. Ladies and gentlemen, selling alcohol at the mall will lead to drinking and driving. I'm sorry, but when I go to pick up my son or daughter at the mall, I do not want to have to leave the parking lot and run into someone who has been drinking. We preach and preach and preach and preach that our children need to be responsible and make the responsible decisions in life. Yet we're throwing in their face the fact that it is okay to go to the mall, have a couple of beers. My daughter's in the mall, she's in the movie theater with someone who has a wristband on their wrist? How do I know that that person is responsible enough not to share that alcoholic beverage? I don't. How do I know that that person is responsible enough not to get behind the wheel of a car? I don't. So what you're telling me is I'm putting my children's lives at risk so that you can earn a couple of more revenue dollars? This is ridiculous. It just doesn't make sense to me. As a parent, as a teacher and as a responsible adult, it makes absolutely no sense to me. My other question for you is simply this. It will take one fatal accident, just one sixteen-year-old child having gone to the movies with our little three-drink person who is now ebrated, intoxicated beyond belief because when he got there, he had three drinks. Now he's totaled that up to six. He comes out and he kills someone. Is this the legacy that this council wants to be left with? Is that the history, is that what you want history to remember you by? As being the council that said, okay, for that sixteen-year-old to be put in that position to where they died? Think about it. I wouldn't want that on my shoulders. Thank you.
Next, Garrison Villalobos, and then after Garrison, Sandy Gaetan.
Hello. My name is Garrison Villalobos and I'm here with also my group of friends who are with me here protesting against this. The first point that I want to touch is that not a few weeks ago, I went, I took my youth group to the mall to just hang out, to be like in a safe environment. And I talked to my pastor and he said it was fine because he trusts us enough to be there and be safe. He knows that in there, there's no alcohol, no risk of us getting drunk or anything like that. And also I have a little brother and sister. And I don't want them to go to the movies, like when I take the movies, I don't want them to see people getting drunk or watching a movie. As my advisor said, you don't know if the person wearing a wristband is responsible enough to not share that drink. You never know, they can share it with a ten-year-old, a twelve-year-old, even lower. And it's just, it's not right. Just to make a few extra revenue money, it is not worth the risk. Thank you.
Sandy Gaetan, after Sandy, Linda Titus, I believe that's the last name.
Hello, everyone, my name is Sandy Gaetan. I am from Adelanto High School and I'm here with my Friday Night Live chapter. And we came here today to tell you that you shouldn't allow the movies to sell alcohol. This is going to affect so many people at my school. We're all put under a lot of pressure to be our best, but we can't do that when there's other people affecting our choices. We don't have a choice, we can't drink, period. But when other people are put into that equation, we just have, we run out of choices. An employee told us that the confession stand, that they're going to sell alcohol, is right next to the arcade and that's where a lot of us hang out. I mean, what kind of an example does that set? When the Planning Commission discusses, we learn that people can buy two drinks at once in the lobby and take it to any of the dark movie auditoriums where it will be nearly impossible to tell who is drinking that second beer. If a teen comes home with alcohol on their breath and their parents ask, where did you get the alcohol? And they say the movies, what do you think is going to happen? We have learned in school about how alcohol can trigger bad behavior. We have already seen fights and break-ins at the mall. Why add alcohol to this situation? The bottom line is that we don't want alcohol in our movie theaters. This should be a family-friendly place. Thank you.
Linda Titus, I believe it is, and then Michael Grabhorn after Linda.
Mayor Garcia and City Council members. My name is Linda Titus. I'm a resident of the High Desert and I love the High Desert as evident by the T-shirt that I have on. I'm a mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, foster mother, healthcare professional and involved and concerned resident of the High Desert. I'm emotional. This is serious. I came here to be involved in a healthy, growing community. When I went to the website, it said that this was going to be an area by design, investment improvement. Citizens were going to be improving, sustaining their well-being and equality of life. That is what brought me here. To be a part of active living, have a walkable and safe environment. This is my granddaughter to play, she's one of seventeen. I have three great-grandsons also. It said it was going to be a healthy place to eat, a healthy place for the workforce with resources to promote wellness. I am now involved in health and wellness.
You have thirty seconds?
Okay. So let me just skip to the physiological health piece quickly. A male weighing a hundred and seventy pounds consumes three sixteen-ounce, that's sixteen ounces there, that's sixteen ounces, containers and he gets seven point five percent alcohol. That's if he has a healthy liver and pancreas. Drink that in two hours and you've got point, point, two point six eight percent and the legal limit is point zero eight or less. He doesn't sober up for fifteen point eight hours. Female, hundred and thirty pounds.
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael Grabhorn, and then after Michael, Kenneth Arteri.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here tonight. I addressed everybody, but I only have two minutes. I am opposed to the serving the alcohol in the theater. I hear a lot of this, we want to be like Apple Valley, we want to be like Hesperia and I don't know whatever happened to, we want to be Victorville and we want to be taking care of ourselves. I don't know why we can't put a spin on our theater that it's a family-oriented theater that does not serve alcohol and that you're welcome to bring your kids here. You're welcome to stay with them. If you have older teenagers, they can go by themselves. We don't have a problem. Believe it or not, I was a child once and I believed going to the theater and only getting three drinks. If I want to drink, I'm sure I could figure out a way to do it. And I'm not more intelligent than any of you. We could all figure that out as children. One thing I wanted to mention is in the ordinance that was written, it mentioned that if needed be, there would be added security. I think saying that kind of says a lot right there. Also, as was mentioned, most of our customers are clients for the theater drive, so therefore we're encouraging drunk driving. The last thing I think is we're setting a precedent. You know how marijuana is just kind of running down the streamline here and I think the next thing would be serving edibles at the theater. And so I think we need to keep that in mind too. Thank you.
After Kenneth will be Nicole Williams.
Hello. I'm here on behalf of Cobalt Institute of Math and Science. I am a part of ASB. I am the two thousand nineteen Secretary and Commissioner of Concessions at my school. My friends and I like to be around positive influences, people that can be good role models for us. We want to, we want to be less, least exposed as little as possible to distractions and addictions like alcohol. My friends and I need to focus on our goals, education and careers. We do not to be entangled, we do not need to be entangled by addictions that will hold us that will hold us back from reaching our dreams. Please consider the fact of selling alcohol in our local theater increases children's and youth, youth exposure to alcohol and alcoholics. Also, inhibitions are limited while intoxicated, and we do not need that near our children or youth where they spend time at the mall. Please vote against the sales of alcohol in our local theater. Thank you.
At Nicole, and then after Nicole, Michelle Johnson.
Thank you all. My name is Nicole Williams-Artri, and that was my son. I am a business owner and a parent to two Victorville teenage youth. I am in opposition to the sale of alcohol in the movie theater that we frequent as a family, but mostly by my teenagers meeting their friends on the weekends. What message are we sending as adults that we can't sit in a movie for two and a half hours and not have an alcoholic beverage? I just don't understand. There are other ways that we can find ways for us to find entertainment, and that's not it for our families. Also, as a parent, I want to say that if this is the direction that the council would like to agree with and go forward with as the selling of alcohol in the mall of the Victor Valley Cinemark Theater, I will not support it as a mother, and I will not allow my children to continue to go there. And I thank you so much for listening to the concerned comments of a parent, a concerned parent. I thank you so much.
Michelle Johnson, after Michelle, Jalen, and I cannot make out the last name.
Hi, my name is Michelle Johnson, and I am against alcohol in the movie theaters, especially the mall of Victor Valley where a lot of kids go, especially on the weekends, because that is the main source of entertainment here in the High Desert. I think that there is a time and place for a lot of things, and drinking while at the movie theaters is not the right time when you can do that in other places, such as the bar. And I just don't think that, as many people have said, it sets a good example, and it's just in the long run not beneficial, especially for our youth. Sorry, I'm nervous. Yeah, I don't think that. And I don't know if you guys are just trying to attract an older audience, but there are lots of places where they can go and drink and also get entertainment. The movie theater at the mall is where a lot of youth go, and I know that peer pressure is real. And even though there's an age limit for buying alcohol, there are people of age that are not the most responsible and can bring or be in contact with younger members underage and could give them alcohol. And I just...
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Jalen, and then after Jalen is Xavier Jeter, I believe, Jeter.
Good evening, city council. I personally feel like it's a bad idea to put alcohol in a safe environment where children obviously go. I'm pretty sure you guys see children outside of the mall, like kids my age, because I'm eighteen tomorrow. So, yeah, and I personally think that it sounds like it's going to be a law enforcement issue, because if you trying, if you are trying to attract older audiences, you're going to see older men going in and coming out drunk. And police are going to get involved, and then it's going to cause more police problems. And then a drunk man doesn't think, is what I heard. And they kind of like react different than a man in his right mind. So then it turns into violence, and now that's a lawsuit. I'm pretty sure you guys don't want lawsuits. That's, thank you.
Devin? Uh, let me see. Devin Shaw, I think it is.
I'm Xavier Dieter, and I just don't think it's a safe idea to put alcohol inside of a movie theater where families go. And it's like, me, I go to the movies a lot, and I don't want to have, be around a bunch of alcohol or alcohol at all. And it's like, it won't be safe because, like, children, especially for underage, they could get their hands on alcohol if they really wanted to. Like, they could just give a older person some money, and they could just get the beer for them. And that's not really a good idea. And I feel like it will really cause a lot of problems for the community. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Kim Ammerman, and after Kim will be Vicky Mack.
Good evening, council members, and I would like to say a special warm welcome to the new council members. My name is Kim Ammerman, and I'm addressing you as a concerned citizen and mother regarding the conditional use permit of the theater of our mall. Sorry, I ran. Within the theater, it's attached to a mall. It attracts a large amount of unattended minors, as they've already attested to. This becomes a social hangout setting in a healthy way, allowing more options of alcohol at this location only sets our children up to be exposed to the alcohol as part of their regular experience. According to Mothers Against Drunk Driver, youth are six times more likely to develop alcohol dependence, abuse, when they start drinking at an age of fifteen. Four thousand three hundred people are killed each year due to teen alcohol use. These statistics are staggering and definitely not something that we'd like to permit. When I attend the movies at this location, I already have issues with patrons acting out and disturbing the movie experience. I have yet to seen a theater employee intervene on any type of disruption. Now imagine adding alcohol to that. It's only a matter of time before this annoying disruption escalates into something more intense. I do not feel that while watching a PG or G-rated movie with my kids and/or grandkids that I or any other adult should need to enjoy alcohol to enhance their experience. The theater has already admitted that they may need to increase security and the monitoring for any disturbances, so they've already indicated that they are fully aware that there will be
Thirty seconds.
additional problems in this setting. We have heard all the PSAs that buzzed driving is drunk driving. Let's not support the problem, but create a positive experience and role models for all of our children and youth. I would like to thank the council and the planning commission and ask them to decline the request for conditional use at this time. Thank you.
Vicky Mack, and after Vicky will be Tanya Duplesha, I believe. Okay.
Good evening. As a lifeline, it's, I'm sorry, as a lifelong citizen of this city, as a mental health advocate, as a person that has recovered fifteen years from substance abuse, and as a social worker on the front lines working with people who are in recovery from substance abuse, I'm asking you to not follow the recommendation of the planning commission and approve this municipal code amendment for the conditional use of the sale of alcohol. Alcohol, you know, as we've seen, is just detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of this city. As city leaders, it is your responsibility to model sound decision-making, and especially for the youth here who are trying to go in the right direction, who are trying to do the right thing. It's up to us to show them and support them and encourage them by not encouraging the sale of more alcohol. They're here, they're advocating, they're trying to be good citizens. And it's really up to us to support sound decision-making and to say, you know what? We have alcohol stores galore. We have alcohol sales in grocery stores. We have alcohol sales in gas stations. We have alcohol sales in restaurants. As a person in recovery, I needed that place that I could safely go and not have to be exposed to alcohol. And so the movie theater kind of seems to be our last frontier. So I'm asking you to please not approve this
You have thirty seconds.
conditional use permit and to model things that we want to see in the world.
Tanya Dupleshan, I think? That's how you pronounce it. I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing incorrectly.
Good afternoon. My name is Tanya Dupleshan. And I just wanted to state that I am very much against alcohol in the movie theater, in the mall where teenagers come together. I have grandkids that go to the movie theater. There's kids at our church that goes to the movie theater, and they should not be exposed to anything like this. Thank you.
Pastor Danny Dupleshan, and after Pastor Danny, Martha Ramirez.
Evening. I just want to state that I am against, of course, the use of alcohol, the sale of alcohol in the movies. The cities of Hesperia and the cities of Apple Valley have their own unique situations. Ours is that our mall is our metropolis for our children, and this is where they go to congregate, this is where they get life lessons. And we all know that in the fifties and sixties and seventies, tobacco was at an all-time high. But when this, when the use of tobacco was restricted, when the sale of tobacco was restricted, when the advertisement of tobacco was restricted, our children aren't using tobacco at the rate that they were using it in those days. We all know that marijuana was against the law. You never found people smoking or eating edible. I didn't even know the word edible until the guy said it a few minutes ago. I have to ask my wife what he was talking about. If you allow this, our kids are going to model themselves after this. They're going to find ways to acquire this. And it's just going to be a bag, a can of worms that you're opening that I don't think the city is ready to really accommodate. Hesperia is not a mall. Apple Valley is not a mall. It's not where their children go to quote-unquote "let their hair down". We need to be aware that we are really, I play dominoes. There's a thing that says, "All money is not good money", you know? So I know that this will be a great revenue stream for the city, but we have to count the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is Martha, but it's M-something Ramirez. And then after Ramirez, Jonathan Porres.
Hi, my name is Martha Ramirez, and on behalf of Broken Hearts Ministry. And I came to say to you today that this is a wrong choice for us to pass this. Just ask yourself the question, would you allow your children to go into a movie theater where they're selling alcohol? Not knowing what predators can be in there? Or not knowing what people could be in there that are trying to recover, but then they see other people drinking around them, so they go and they get a drink? You have to ask yourselves these questions. How would you feel if your kids were in that movie theater? Or how about, what if they come in drunk already? What if they sneak in those little bottles, those little shots? And then they add it with the alcohol that's already been there that they're selling? Or how about if they're taking medication? And when they are taking their medication, they go and they drink alcohol with their medication? What it can do to these people to react more? And then with our kids being there on the line? This is just a big thing that's going to happen where a lot of kids, it's the innocent ones that are going to be affected by it. And it's our decision in the end whether we want these children to be affected or we want them to be on a safe road. I feel like doing this, you would be affecting them to all kinds of disposal. The teenagers, I'm very proud of these teenagers, but not all teenagers come from a good background. And not all teenagers come from good homes. They come from broken homes where they see this every single day. They see drunkenness every single day. So to them, it might be normal. It might be normal. And then they might give it to their teenage friends. There's a lot of things that you guys are putting on the line, and we need to stop looking at the dollar bill, and we need to start looking at the children's hearts and where our children are going. This is not what America is based on. We're not based on the dollar bill. We're based on freedom. Thank you.
Jonathan Porres, and after Jonathan is Rosio Garcia.
Good evening, council. My name is Jonathan Porres. I lived in the High Desert, and I've grown here for twenty-four years of my life. I watched the mall grow into a very beautiful place for our families to gather together. It's become more and more family-friendly as time went on. When I heard about this issue, I don't even know why it's even up for discussion. Apple, I, I went, I go to Just Ranch a lot, to that movie theater. I found out that they were renovating the entire entrance of it to sell alcohol. They were renovating a theater in Hesperia to sell alcohol. I don't know why that needs to come into our city. Children like young Cameron, young Elliot, Ms. Landry's kids, and all of the speakers before me understand that by them serving alcohol, their parents are no longer going to allow them to go. And I don't know if this is a, some sort of profit thing that, you know, you're trying to fit a budget. I understand that money comes from many different, many different places and many different decisions being made in the city. This isn't really up for discussion, in my opinion, because the money that you're going to lose from all the kids that are not going to be able to go to the theater, not to mention the people that come from Apple Valley to, and Hesperia over here to Victorville because they don't want to see the alcohol over there. So they come to our theater, and now we're going to join those theaters and sell the alcohol along with them. If the entire High Desert sells alcohol in their theaters, where are the children going to go? Where are the parents going to allow them to go? They can go to bars when they're old enough. They can go to clubs when they're old enough.
Thirty seconds.
They can go to restaurants and drink when they're old enough. But that's a controlled environment. There is no set of regulations, there is no security, and there is no rules that you can set forth that would stop people from abusing the system. A wristband doesn't mean anything. You can cut a wristband off, glue it together, and put it on someone else. Is someone going to check that wristband? All types of abuses can come from this, and I urge you to please reconsider this. Thank you.
Rosio Garcia, and after Rosio, Raoul Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Rosio Garcia. I am a resident of Victorville, and this is my very first meeting that I come to. I made this a point to be here tonight because this is something that I really, really don't want to see in our theater. I live a couple of blocks away from it, and that's the only place my daughter can go where I allow her to go with her friends without me being there with her. So I strongly, strongly ask every single person that has a vote in this and that has any say on this to please do not let it pass. And it will be in your guys' conscience. I did not come prepared with a big ol' script, but I'm going to take advantage of all my time here. And I really, really want to implore you guys, please look at the benefits and, and the, things that are not going to help us. And again, my, I just told my daughter this morning as I, we were driving, and I told her, "Do you want to go with me to the city meeting? Because they want to sell alcohol in the theater." And she just looked at me and jumped, like, "Why would they even dare do that?". Well, because that's what they're trying to do. So I was just going to come up, come in, sit down and listen to what everyone had to say. And when I just heard the first few minutes of what the gentleman had to say, I, I had to say something. I was here
You have thirty seconds.
and I don't want to be the person to say, "I was there and my voice was not heard". Thank you, and have a great evening.
Raoul Rodriguez, and after Raoul, Steve Rollins.
Good evening, council members. I'd like to encourage every one of yous to vote no on this issue. Bonka, you too especially. Because this is an issue. You can tell by the young people that spoke today, they're against it. They know right from wrong. It's important that you reject this stupid idea. I don't know who thought about this, but I think it's really wrong. So you need to remember that you don't need to put alcohol in their hands, reject the idea, because if, if they do happen to get alcohol, eventually they're going to drink more and more. They're going to be driving vehicles, especially after the movie, and guess what's going to happen? Someone is liable to get killed or injured very seriously. So please reject this idea. I think it's wrong. I think it's stupid. And someone doesn't know what they're doing when they came up with this idea. Even if they do it in Hesperia and Apple Valley, that's stupid also. They need to change that, because people don't know what they're doing. They have their head buried in the sand. They can't even think straight. So please reject this idea. It's wrong, and please do that. Thank you very much.
Steve Rollins, and after Steve, Chef Bachel.
Good evening.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, my name is Steve Rawlings. I'm actually the representative here this evening on behalf of Cinemark, and I didn't know exactly what the protocol was, but I put in my slip. We did give a fairly comprehensive presentation to the planning commission, and we've been working with your staff for quite a long period of time. Went to your planning commission last February the 14th, it was Valentine's Day, and gave a small presentation and then worked with your staff and brought this, both the zoning code amendment as well as the conditional use permit back to them back in November. And we had the opportunity at that time to give a full presentation, to walk through each of our policies and our procedures and to kind of give a background of why the movie theater industry is going this direction and some of the safeguards that not only the theater industry has put in, but our company as well. This evening, I don't know if the time affords me to be able to do that comprehensively, but I did want to point out that, you know, we... This is intended to simply be a luxury amenity for the people that are coming to the movie theaters. It is clear that the movie theater industry is being challenged by the home theater market. There are less and less people coming out to the movies each and every year. And again, because of things like Netflix and Amazon Fire Stick so that you can jailbreak, you can actually watch, you know, movies that are in the movie theater right now at your home. It's illegal, but it goes on each and every day. So the movie theater companies, as a result, have had to kind of up their game, so to speak, in order to keep people coming out to the movie theaters to enjoy the experience of watching it on a big screen with a good audio and have an opportunity to go out with their families. And in order to do that, we've, you know, we're offering, you know, more food, enhancing our seating arrangements, and we also want to be able to offer the ability for somebody to enjoy an alcoholic beverage. One thing that's interesting about the alcoholic beverage service, approximately 10% of the adult population will actually order an alcoholic beverage. They typically do that before they actually enter into the auditorium. Most of us know that our own consuming habits are is that we visit the concession stand before we take our seats. Statistically speaking, only 10% of that 10% will actually consume a second alcoholic beverage. And that's simply because the only real reason any of us ever leave our seats once the movie has started is because we have to use the restroom. And that's about the only time anybody ever leaves their seat is if they have to, you know, go to the restroom. So as a result, we typically will only sell one beverage to a person that is looking for that, and it's usually before the movie has started. We have in other municipalities, you know, limited our drinks to, you know, two per person per visit there to address, you know, particular concerns. And we certainly aren't looking to be an issue with your community thus far. In the other, I believe it's 24 movie theaters that we operate in the state of California in which we do sell alcoholic beverages, we have not had any reported issues with our service of beverages. And as far as I know, the other 150 approximately movie theaters throughout the state of California that are operated by other national companies such as AMC, Edwards, Regal, we've not heard of any, you know, widespread issues with the service of an alcoholic beverage, that it truly is being consumed by adults that are simply looking for a luxury amenity. Pricing of these beverages are going to be similar to what you might expect to pay if you were going to a baseball game or a football game or something like those. This is certainly not an inexpensive place in which to consume alcohol. The last point I just wanted to touch on, and I appreciate it, I don't know if I have any more time left, but the last point I was going to point out is that...
You do have some more time left because as the applicant, you're not limited by the rules of the city. You have a vested interest. So I wanted to explain that to the people in the audience. By law, we can't limit the applicant. So, but on the other hand, this is the time for public comment as opposed to your presentation. This matter is going to be continued, and I believe it's your request, and there will be an opportunity for a more detailed presentation to the council.
Terrific. I just wasn't familiar with what the procedure was, and so I wanted to not miss my opportunity to speak. So, you know, with that, you know, typically a gentleman by the name Matt Dunn usually accompanies me at these hearings. He is in charge of our program nationally. He is the expert in terms of our details, of our policies and procedures, and was unable to make it here this evening. And that was, and we wanted to make sure that we were accessible to you folks, the decision-makers, to be able to provide you with all the information that you might want accurately, and that's why the request was for the continuance. It certainly wasn't anything other than to be able to make sure that we were here to provide you with all of the information that you guys need to make a good decision for your particular community. So, you know, with that, I wanted to just kind of, one last little point there is, we're certainly not looking to change the nature of our business or as any of the other major theater companies. We are simply trying to offer a luxury amenity to the responsible, you know, folks that come out to our movies on a regular basis. We're looking to continue the family-friendly atmosphere. We're certainly willing to enhance, you know, security to ensure that. But as an example, in family-friendly environments, you know, at Disneyland, at the California Adventure, you can certainly purchase an alcoholic beverage. Every single Chuck E. Cheese in the state of California has a Type 41 license. I actually brought the list with me from the ABC website. And they are not, they don't offer up to limit the amount of alcoholic beverages. They don't go through the, some of the protocols that we go through. We scan everybody's ID with a card scanner. So every time you come up for a beverage, you've got to, we scan it into a machine that holds your data so that way we know how many beverages you've purchased at that particular visit. And if you come back, you know, in five minutes, we will follow you back in to see what happened to the first beverage that you consume. And that piece of machinery is kind of expensive, and that's something that we put in as standard to kind of go through some extra safeguards. And those are things that you don't see in restaurants, but you do see it in the movie theater industry to kind of protect, you know, our clientele and our atmosphere. So with that, I, again, I'm sorry if I was a little out of turn with the protocol here. And I'll be happy to answer questions or follow your lead in terms of what you would like me to do.
Madam Mayor, may I make a clarification? I don't want to mislead you because the continuance, I didn't mean to imply that it's going to be continued because that's discretionary with the council. And if the council, if you wish to present that now on any further information, I don't want to discourage you from doing that because I can't predict what the council will do. But I just wanted you to know that in case the continuance doesn't occur.
I appreciate that. Then with that said, I will do my one little handout. It's very brief. It outlines basically, basically everything I just said here. But if I could at least get this out to you folks, I would greatly appreciate that, Madam Mayor. I simply just kind of put together a quick summary of what our proposed operations are as the first page there. We, your planning commission did recommend a midnight ceasing of sales of alcoholic beverages. We're perfectly fine with that. We've also worked with other communities, and we have worked with other communities on other hours of ceasing sales. But all of our employees that are engaged in sale of alcoholic beverages, whether you are a manager, or you're a server, or you're somebody that is our monitor for our auditoriums, you do go through specific training. This isn't just, you know, a quick seminar. It's usually through, held by the ABC. It's called their LEAD training program. It's for responsible beverage services. It helps you identify, how to identify fake IDs, number one. But we use the card scanning system, which somewhat has taken out the human element. The second thing is, is that it also, you know, educates you on how to look for signs of intoxication. Interesting thing about our particular service is you have to come out to the concession area. There's a single line in order to make an alcoholic beverage purchase. And the only product that you can purchase at that particular line is beer or wine. You can't go to any of the other concession stands and, "No, I cannot order popcorn at this line." We do that as a control measure. It allows our personnel to take the time to, you know, scan your ID so that we're not feeling rushed because there's a bunch of people trying to get into a movie and they want their popcorns. We can take our time. We don't feel rushed by a big line stacking up so that we can do the proper identification check. We also have an opportunity to see the person and observe the person, to make sure that there's no signs of intoxication. We also have more management people, obviously, working in the lobby area there also, so that we have multiple eyes looking at the line there. Alcoholic beverages are poured into a clear plastic container so that it's easier to recognize. Beers are in a container that are 16 ounces. It's basically a 12-ounce pour, but you're going to get a little bit of foaming, so that's why a red solo cup is roughly 16 ounces, and it allows for a 12-ounce pour. And then our wines are served in those plastic little like wine glasses, and it's approximately, I think it's a nine-ounce pour. And after we've done the ID check, everybody would be fitted with a wristband after you've done an ID check. The wristband does not substitute for an ID check. If you come back later for that second beverage, again, that doesn't happen very often, only about 10% of that, of the 10% that actually purchased one will actually come back. That doesn't substitute. You can't just hold your hand up and say, "Hey, I'll have another." You have to go back right through the same identification check. And again, our card scanning system holds your data. It only holds it for 24 hours, so we're not in violation of any kind of Privacy Information Act. And it holds it just for 24 hours so that we can, when we scan it, we can know that, "Oh, you purchased one 30 minutes ago at 8:02, and now it's 8:32." And that's a very sophisticated system, and it's a check that we've implemented that allows us to really control and monitor how many beverages we've actually sold. Because somebody asked the question, "Well, how would you know when you've served somebody, you know, the maximum number of drinks," as your planning commission recommended, "Three." That is the explanation that we have a computerized system that tracks the time in which you made that beverage purchase. So that's a little bit of the actual procedures for the alcohol, for the beer and wine sales. And again, this is just beer and wine only. This is not any kind of distilled spirits. People are able to take it into the auditorium. They are fitted with a wristband. We have somebody go in and monitor the activity in the auditoriums at least every half hour. And these are not just quick checks, and these are people that are over the age of 21, and these are people that have been trained. And they kind of do an H pattern. They kind of walk into the auditorium, they'll walk down by the very front of the screen, take a look up, they'll walk all the way back up to the very top of the seats, look down, they'll pause in the middle, look there, and do the same thing on the other side. So it's kind of a little bit of an H pattern, if you would. Some people have asked the question, "Gee, how do you spot people in a dark theater?" Well, I would ask everybody to go the next time you're at a movie and you see a daylight scene, whether it be an explosion or simply it's in the daytime. You can see everybody. You can see what everybody's wearing. There's enough light, ambient light. And again, this check isn't something where somebody's in and out in 10 seconds. They're there, and they're trained to be in there to monitor the activity in the movie theaters there. We, the, we do have, at this particular movie theater, we changed security card companies lately, and we now have a, we've contracted with a security card company that is actually providing us with armed off-duty police officers. I provided you there a schedule, they're there on Friday and Saturday evenings, and that's just an extra measure to, you know, have a presence there to continue to keep our family-friendly environment safe. So those are a couple of the operational things that I wanted to kind of touch on. I included here kind of the locations in which we, Cinemark, and I apologize, Cinemark is also Century Theater, so if I said Century and Cinemark, it's the same company, and I apologize if I confused anybody. But those are the locations that we have currently in the state of California. We have nearly 150 nationwide under the Cinemark brand that we do this alcoholic beverage services. And I did provide you folks with a kind of our alcohol service policy, and some of it is what I just went through with you folks there. And then I also provided with you a list right from the ABC website of many of the major movie theater companies and the locations that they're doing it throughout the state of California. The major theater companies started introducing alcohol, at least in the state of California, back in about 2012. That was after a pilot program by ABC that they started in, I think, 2007. So ABC ran a pilot program for about five years to kind of monitor the activities to see if this was going to be a potential issue. ABC felt comfortable enough that it wasn't going to pose problems and that there were controls that could be placed in that wouldn't allow this to be any kind of particular public safety problem, and hence all of the theater companies started in 2012 introducing this. And now there's approximately about 150, what I call kind of suburbia movie theaters, similar to yours, that are operating, and some have been operating now with alcohol for five and six years now. And again, the, you know, the nature of the business is that the movie theater companies are challenged to enhance the experience of the people that are going, and by, because again, the home theater market, and they're able to do that by providing a luxury amenity such as alcohol, food, and better seating, and that's what our proposal is. So, you know, with that, that's for the most part the presentation. I appreciate your time and your attention, and I appreciate everybody that was here this evening. I applaud every community that is, you know, concerned with what's going on there. And Cinemark is certainly dedicated to try to be a very, very good corporate citizen and serve the citizens well in a safe environment. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
I have one question. May I, Madam Mayor? Is this an appropriate time?
Let me think.
The applicant was here.
Can we ask questions now, or are we...
Well, your policy manual doesn't differentiate, but if the council, as a majority wishes to allow some additional time for questions of the applicant, then you can do that.
I just have one, so...
Well, do we want to continue with questions?
Go ahead. I just have one question.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rawlings, for presenting to us. The information you provided is very helpful. The question I have for you is, what do you know about the culture of Victorville and its neighbors? What do you know about the culture of Victorville and its neighbors?
I, having been a resident in the Temecula Marietta area, I have been kind of an inland empire and spent some time on off-road vehicles out in this area here. I do know a few people that live here, and I understand it's a very, you know, it's a great, it's a great community. I've known several people that lived here for a lot of years, but culturally, I have not lived here. I've only been a visitor.
Thank you, Mr. Rawlings. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'd also like to ask questions.
Go ahead.
So I'm going to ask a couple of questions, and I'll let you determine what you want to answer, Steve. So has there been any issues reported in the Apple Valley Theater? And do we have any law enforcement or any crimes that have been reported in terms of alcohol? And thus far, how much in remodeling have you put in the upgrades, and how is that to benefit as a public value to the community?
Here in, well, the, from a public safety standpoint, I'm not aware of any incidences at the Apple Valley location. I do believe that the Sheriff's Department has taken a look at our application, and I would assume that they have researched, you know, I think that the Sheriff's Department also is... Sheriff's Department also is, um, services Apple Valley as well as Hesperia, and they might be better to comment as to whether or not there's been any, any issues, but none, none have been brought to my attention. Um, and, and in terms of investment, um, it is Cinemark's, um, goal and objective to continue to invest in every one of their movie theaters with enhanced seedings and, um, enhancing their lobbies. Um, obviously, that's a, that's a tremendous capital expense to retrofit a movie theater with those luxury recliners or, or a blend of the luxury recliners and the other types of seedings that we place in there. Uh, I, I'm not making this up. It's millions of dollars. This isn't like a fifty thousand dollar upgrade. This is millions of dollars, and they've been systematically trying to go through. Uh, and they operate lots of movie theaters, and obviously, every, each and every year, they, they try to dedicate more money to continuing to enhance that, because to keep people coming out, you've gotta provide a quality atmosphere.
Uh, well, you already answered all my questions, so, uh, I'm clear on everything. Um, I think that's all the questions that we had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, I still have cards, special, uh, and then Selena Mendez after special. Special.
So, Steve, I want you, I wanna show you what it looks like when a teenager, when a teenager, my son got shot.
I'm sorry, uh, no, no, you can't do that here.
I want you to understand, I want you to understand when a person gets drunk.
You have to address that.
And I want the council, I understand, but I want the council to understand when a person gets drunk and a kid gets a weapon in his arm, and you get shot. I want y'all to understand what happens. I want you to understand. And I hope none of you guys vote for this. Now, I had to think long and hard before I came up here to show my body and show what happened to the community, what happens when a young.
I'm sorry, but can you zip up your, uh, shirt?
When, when, when a young kid gets a hold to a gun and you get shot 'cause he was drunk, I had to think long and hard before I came up here to do that. But then to hear him say what he had to say, it just hurts my heart. My mother was an alcoholic. She died. My brother was an alcoholic. He died. I've been to nineteen, nineteen funerals for young kids that died for alcohol. I live seven blocks from where you wanna put this at. I can't handle that. I can't handle seeing these young kids, as the young lady said. And so I knew what I was getting into when I came down here, but I thought it was important for Steve to see, to visualize.
You have thirty seconds?
That kid was so drunk, he didn't know me or anybody else. Four of us got shot. Four of us. Two, two didn't make it. I was blessed to make it. And that's the second time I've been shot in life. First time, I was in the military. I asked you kindly, please do not support this, 'cause when a gun is in a child's hand and he's drunk on alcohol, it's dangerous.
Selena Mendez, and then Antonio Pipens after Selena.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Um, my name's Selena Mead. I actually didn't intend on speaking this evening, but some of our youth that we work with that volunteer in the community asked us to come out and support them in this issue this evening. Um, I would like to say, thank you to the gentleman from Cinemark slash Century that came out to provide comments and information to the council and to the community this evening. One of the statistics that he gave is that ten percent of those who attend the movies will actually make a purchase, and only ten percent of that ten percent will actually ask for a second drink. My question to you is, how many drinks does it take for a child to have a drink and then get in a car and drive a dangerous weapon? It only takes one. So they don't, it doesn't need to be ten percent. It only needs to be access to one. We do have, yes, Red Robin and some of the other businesses in the mall, they do serve alcohol, but those are in a more controlled situation. These alcoholic beverages will be served in the light and consumed in the dark, and that is the bottom line. So it does, it spans the access to alcohol to our children. Additionally, there is no limitations for G-rated or PG thirteen movies. So now if I'm taking my niece and nephew to the movie, I can have somebody sitting right next to me consuming an alcohol be, beverage while they're watching any of the new cartoons that are coming out. Drinks are sold and tracked by purchase is, is what was said. Um, what was not addressed was, will someone be allowed to purchase more than one drink when they make that first purchase?
You have thirty seconds?
And what is the timeframe in which they can purchase again? Also, you're considering a continuance. I ask that you consider the comments of the young people who took time away from homework and extracurricular activities. That gentleman is paid to come out here and speak for half of the behi, business that he works for. Those kids volunteered their time to come out and advocate for the one thing that they have available to them, and that is to come to the movies here in Victorville. Business in, at the Cinemark here in our city is a privilege. It is a privilege.
Your time is up.
For Cinemark to do business here. Thank you very much for your time.
Antonio Pipens, and after Antonio, it's Roger Laplante.
Here at Victorville Cinemark and the council for hearing me. Uh, here for a school project representing at Victor Valley. A lot of the things with the parents that I'm against, the drinking at the movie theater. Uh, I do bring my children here. I have six. They've been here since, uh, birth and on, and it is a place for them to hang out. Uh, a lot of things that they said, like, kids seeing the, you know, the parents drinking or other folks drinking, that's exposure. Spiking the drinks is gonna be hard for anyone to see. Buzz driving, I don't know the legal limits on, you know, how much alcohol you can consume and that you get a ticket after you're driving, but that's also a concern. But, um, I really understand that we, as a city, have to make business decisions to, you know, gain revenue, but we've gotta put, you know, our educated minds together and find a different way, uh, that we can, you know, get money, but also help the kids to have a place to go out and hang out and be safe. So I think the burden is on us as citizens as well as the council to do that. It's not up to Cinemark. I mean, they have to make their revenue the way they can. So we just gotta find another way around that. Other than that, uh, let's see here. Like I said, monetary responsibility, um, it's not at the expense of our children. Uh, we already have too many accidents up here. For all you guys who live in the high desert, you know that. We don't know for sure. I don't have a crystal ball, but accidents are happening at an alarming rate, and the last thing we need to do is add it around our community and our area, 'cause we don't know what adults and what kids are gonna get exposed. Thank you. Thank you for hearing me out, and, uh, yeah, I just think we need to find another way, another way to make, uh, money. So, thank you.
Uh, Ra. Okay, it wasn't indicated. You don't have anything. So you wanna go, public comments? Okay, thank you. That was the last card that I had on this item here. At this time, um, uh, do I have a, do I ask for a motion to continue, uh, the public hearing at this time?
I understand that's the applicant's request, so, uh, the, the council should consider that request and approve it or deny it.
Okay. At this time, we, uh, I'm asking if we, um, for a motion in a second to continue this public hearing.
I will make the motion because I wanna have a discussion, because I have a lot of questions, and I don't know how else I'm gonna ask, be able to ask them.
So you're in favor of the continuation, then?
Well, they, they're the one that paid the money and made the request for the hearing. It wasn't, it's not the city's request, and they wanna make a more of a presentation. I think we've heard most of the presentation, but I personally have a lot of questions that I'd like to ask now that I've heard the public speak and the individual, and so that's why I'm making the motion, so we can have that discussion, and because they put up the money and they made the request.
Wait a second now. Uh, you second to continue?
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez.
Now, I'd like to have comments, please. I heard three different speakers allude to the fact that this is the city's request 'cause we're gonna make money. That's a new one for me, staff. Is that true or not true, or is there some rumor circulating that somehow we're involved in this for the money?
Councilmember Cox, that's a good question, and thank you for asking. I, I would say that's, uh, not true. That's not a motivation of city, and I think for the benefit of the public, it would be helpful to, uh, identify clearly that, uh, this is a request by the, uh, applicant, uh, or the business owner, Cinemark. And, and effectively, what you're here seeing today is the deliberative process. It starts with the planning commission largely because there's a land use-related request as to whether or not they can, uh, sell alcohol at their current location, because the current city laws don't permit theaters, uh, to sell alcohol is, is, is basically what it comes down to, is, is part of why we're here tonight. In the request before the council, um, now that it's completed its deliberative process with the planning commission as to the CUP, which is the land use-related component, that land use-related component can't be perfected unless the city laws are changed. And the only way the city law can change is, is what you're seeing tonight. We've gone through a notice-public hearing process. There's a proposed code amendment for the council to consider, but that's effectively all they're, they're, they're doing tonight is considering. So this council hasn't even taken a position in the affirmative or in the opposition. I suspect, um, they, they may do that, uh, tonight, but this is not a city-motivated project. This is strictly, uh, a request by a, a private business as to how they, uh, conduct the business.
Um, second question, should, I'm not advocating for or against, should the city council grant the conditional use permit? And any of these events that the public indicated they're concerned about actually occur, does the city council have the right to revoke that conditional use permit? The answer is yes.
Answer is yes.
Since this question has come before the council, normally the staff will do some research. Is there any indication that there's been a problem? Do we have any knowledge of any problems that have arisen as a result of serving alcohol? What came to, the reason I ask the question, what came to my mind, is if these things are true, we need to revoke the restaurants? I go to restaurants all the times and see mom and dad having beer and wine with their children eating, especially if you go to a sports bar. Yes, the person sitting right next to you is yelling and screaming, uh, and I, when I listen to all of these concerns, uh, I suppose that they would apply to almost all establishments that sell alcohol. That's what it certainly sounds like. I'm not, I'm not saying it is true or not, but I would hate to have any question unanswered when the individuals, any individuals on any land use, conditional use permit, zone change, can pay to have public hearings and be heard, and they make a request before we ever opened the public hearing, that they want this continued so that they can make a full presentation. Um, I wish that had been stated in, in the beginning. On the other hand, should this be continued, I want everyone to understand that, and this is a statement rather than a question, all the information that the city council have taken and received tonight continues then to the hearing or to the next meeting, if there is one, and it's as if everyone appeared and gave that information again. They can appear. If it's continued, they can appear, but they don't have to. The city takes serious people's comments and inputs, but I, I had the questions and concerns. I listened very carefully. I, I'm listening very carefully, but a lot of these comments, I know they're emotional, but if they're true, we need to ban alcohol every place in the city. That isn't the question. We're not gonna consider it, but there must be some more information in regard to, there must be information that's available regarding alcohol in theaters. You know, I, I did not know that small children weren't attended in the theaters. I never allowed any of mine to do that, but that's another question. So I had these comments, that's why I made the motion. Uh, if there's any other comments with the council, I don't wanna take up your time. Thank you.
Go ahead. Did you have something? I make a motion to deny the continuance, since we've already read the material and we've had it. Secondly, I make a motion to deny the change of the code and the conditional permit. The vote, I feel, is sufficient. We've heard enough information, and we have had this, these documents in front of us, and we've read them. I see no reason for a continuance.
Uh, Madam Mayor.
My motion is to deny the code change, the conditional permit, and the continuance.
Um, uh, with, with respect, Doctor, the, there's a pending motion which has to be disposed of before another motion can be introduced, unless it's a, uh, a procedural motion, which that is not. So, uh, uh, the proper procedure would be to hear the motion to continue. If that is denied, then, uh, the, the council can entertain other motions.
Mr. City Attorney, if I might, would you consider the motion made by Mayor Protem Ramirez, a substitute motion?
Only if the moving, uh, party consents to the substitution. So, uh, uh, Councilmember Cox would have to consent to the substitution.
I think we should take this in order. If there's, if the, it's, if the votes are against, continue it. I think we should vote and say so. It isn't personal, but there is a motion and a second on the floor waiting in action.
Do I call the question?
The question has been called.
Go ahead. Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, this is to continue, correct?
Continue.
Continue, that's all. Not to approve, continue.
We're not approving anything, just continuing. Okay.
All those opposed?
Oppose.
Motion carries to continue with Councilmember Jones and Mayor Protem Ramirez voting no.
Um, Madam Mayor, one other procedural item. Typically, at this point, there, having heard all the requests, you would close the public hearing.
I, I do close the.
You close the public hearing and then continue the substantive matter for further decision.
Okay. At this time, I close the public hearing, and this will be continued to February fifth, twenty nineteen. So no other action is required. Now we move on to item B two. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against a general plan amendment and zone change to reclassify property from IPD Industrial Park District to C two general commercial unto va, vacant parcels located on northwest corner of those Palmas Road and Park Avenue. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council find the municipal code amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Secuus Section one five zero six one B, adopt resolution number nineteen dash zero zero two, approving the general plan amendment, and introduce and waive further reading of ordinance number twenty-three eighty-six approving the zone change.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff at this time? And this is a two-minute, uh, time, uh, limit. I'll start with Ms. Gomez.
Yes. Is this a private parcel where the landowner seeks to change the zoning? I understand that it's a general amendment, but Bob Newberg approached the city, and this property is surrounded by commercial areas, so would you please explain that? That's my fir, my first question. Second is, does the city have a process of addressing how its land will be zoned when it matters, uh, to the nature of the appearance for the future? Um, or does the city have to wait for the applicant to address the city? Uh, what are the pre-p patterns, and has the city thought about surveying the land around so that we don't have to face something like this in the future? And if so, um, did this one fall by the wayside? So it's more procedural, logistical, and then an understanding of the rezoning?
Great. Thank you for those questions. Yes, this app, application is brought to you by the private landowner, which is Bob Newberg, um, and is regarding the appearance. What's before you today is just to rezone the property and adjust our general plan amendment to commercial. Once the property is, is intended to be developed, um, the property owner, in this case, Bob Newberg, would, would. would bring forward a site plan review, where the planning commission would review the components of that development plan. But at this point, the property owner, the applicant, is only asking for the change in zoning.
I have a question. When I looked at the map, I noticed that there had this, an area all the way from Palmdale Road down generally was IPD. But I also noticed that there was occasionally some parcels that had been rezoned to C2, and they're surrounded by C2. Has staff considered, is this a specific plan that's already adopted? Or is this just zoning that's adopted for this area in question? And has staff considered, since there are encroachments of commercial zoning in the IPD, especially on the busy street of Armigosa, have they considered other zone changes? Or is there a zone change that can handle both, say, conditional use permits? So that we don't have individual requests each time there's a potential user? How does staff answer that? How do staff react to that?
Yeah, that is a great question. So first off, it's not part of a specific plan. But as you noted in the graphic there, there is some areas of the IPD district that have been rezoned to commercial. Most of those have occurred on properties that were first vacant, then developed commercial. The issue that we come across with doing rezones on properties that already have developed is that those properties were developed under certain standards. So in this case, they may have been developed under industrial park district standards, which have different parking regulations. They may have roll-up doors. So it may not be conducive to a lot of the commercial uses you would see in the commercial zone. So I hope that helps clarify.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have nothing, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
No more questions, therefore. I open the public hearing. Thank you. Thank you. And I do have one card. Bob Newberg.
Mayor Garcia and members of the council, pleasure to be here this evening with you. My name is Bob Newberg, and I'm the owner of the two parcels covered by this zone change request. Over 30 years ago, my dad and I were looking for land in Southern California, Nevada, to develop small, light industrial, commercial buildings. After months of searching, we purchased seven lots in the industrial park district of Victorville and immediately began construction on three nearly identical buildings located on Dos Palmas Road, Tamarack Road, and Shalane Road. In 1989, I sold a building located on Dos Palmas. And as long as I have owned these buildings and lots, there have been many more inquiries for businesses that require commercial zoning than for industrial park uses. Because of this demand, in 1988, I applied for, and the city council approved, a zone change from IPD to C2, covering one of our seven lots located on the southeast corner of Tamarack and Armigosa. I sold that lot and another lot located on Tamarack Road as well. After 30-plus years, I continue to own and operate the two remaining buildings, as well as the two remaining parcels that are the subject of this zone change request. I hope that the council will concur with the recommendation of the planning staff and the unanimous decision of the planning commission to approve this zone change. And thank you for the opportunity to speak before you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I close the public hearing at this time. Madam Clerk, please read the title of Ordinance Number 2386.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville adopting the zone change portion of case number PLAN 18-00044, a zone change from IPD Industrial Park District to C2 General Commercial on 1.15 acres of vacant land with an environmental exemption.
At this time, I need a motion and a second to introduce and waive further reading of Ordinance Number 2386.
I'd like to make a motion to find the municipal code amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality and adopt Resolution 19-002 approving the general plan amendment and adopting Ordinance Number 2386 to approve the zone change.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B3, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of a notice of exemption and award of construction to RIC Construction Company, Inc., for the Amethyst Pumping Station Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District approve the notice of exemption for the Amethyst Pumping Station Project and award a construction contract to RIC Construction Company Incorporated for the Amethyst Pumping Station Project in the amount of $4,894,474.06.
Thank you. At this time, councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? Two-minute time limit.
Ms. Gomez, do you have any questions?
Yes. There's a technical term that's not been contextualized in the reading of the summary. So would you please define the term "non-responsive" and how it applies to the award bidding process? That's my first question. The next one is, are there consequences to the bidders who are, and I'm assuming the non-responsive terminology applies for the bidders, like the organization that relinquished the proposing bid?
I will do my best to answer the question about the definition of "non-responsive." We consulted with our city attorney when we reviewed this. But there are certain requirements in our bid documents and also in the public contract code that determine what the requirements are for being responsive to a bid. And in this particular case, the contractor was supposed to have a minimum of 50% of the work being done by the contractor. In this case, the prime contractor was proposing to do less than 50% of the work and was subcontracting out more than 50%. And that was clearly a requirement in our bid documents. And so, based on that review, they were determined to be non-responsive to the bid.
Thank you.
And was there another question?
Well, the second one is, how did the "non-responsive," and I think you tied it in together, which helped my understanding. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone?
None? Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do not have any cards, speaker cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing. At this time, I need a motion and a second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District take action in accordance with points 1 and 2 as set forth on the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further questions or comments?
Yes. On November 19, 2018, I submitted an email to the city manager, which included Mrs. Rivas and Mr. Mendiola that read the following. Please provide me with the documents that the five bidder submitted, hard copies and email. I was also requesting a meeting to discuss these requests. I was requesting a meeting, now I'm requesting a meeting no later than hopefully two weeks. And hopefully, Mr. Mezler is able to accommodate this request and these inquiries, because I still have a couple of questions in terms of this. I never received any such documentation displaying my requests, although I did send an email to add this part to the email chain link. So I'm requesting a meeting to verify for the five bids, and I would like the chain that I have sent to Mr. Mezler to be added as today's report. And I've already read it into the record. That was it.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, items C1 through C10 can be approved with one motion unless there is a council member requesting an item to be pulled for further discussion.
I'm going to pull items C4, 5, and C9 and 10.
I have none, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I have none, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
So for item C4, it's, please summarize the purpose of the biannual organizational meeting, and if it's known as the election cycle that takes place biannually, so I'm under assumption that that's implicit. For C5, what constitutes the emergency and how was council communicated about this emergency prior to today? And that's for item C5. For item C9, it seems to be that there's only three animal control officers that assist, that are probably assisted by, I'm thinking, other organizations, partnerships, and volunteers to assist with the animals' controls demands. But that's my assumption, so that's one of the questions. Are the officers still on furlough days? And has the city looked into a program to analyze per unit to see how the city's services are costing per service when they're rendered to the public? This report doesn't show how many of the animals were euthanized, and residents have made me aware that partnering with other cities, there was a zero-sum tolerance to rescuing when capacity is at stake in a shelter or a center. For C10, this report has a lot of interpretable bars, bar graphs, and for the future, please consider a summary and a contextualization of what the statistics and the permitting mean and how they serve for public value when creating strategic planning. With this, I'd like to discuss in length by an appointment Monday. I have available Mondays, 9:15, so we can further go and discuss what these bar means. But I would greatly appreciate if even a paragraph to distinguish what these bar interpretations are. Thank you. And that's it.
So, Madam Mayor, might I make a motion to deal with the items that aren't being considered separately on the consent calendar, so we can dispose of those straight away? And then we can go through the normal process per agenda item for Councilmember Gomez?
So we're approving C1 through C3?
Yes. So my motion would be, Madam Mayor, if you're inviting it, is to take action to approve consent calendar items C1 through C10, with the exceptions of C4 and 5, and C9 and 10 to be considered separately.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So now, we move on to...
I'm sorry, don't we have to, we, a question, a question. Those were pulled, and they may have been answered, but they're still standing because they haven't been approved.
Correct.
Correct. So, and now each of them has to be called separately as an item to allow additional comment and consideration.
That was my understanding.
Okay. I wasn't understanding what Ms. Gomez was saying. I thought she was going to put it in writing and/or meet with...
I believe that is correct, but nevertheless, she pulled the items, and so they were not, under our rules, they were not considered as part of the general motion. So they have to be considered individually.
Okay.
I pulled them for someone to give me some responses to these.
Question, clarification. Did you want the questions answered now, or are these questions...
Well, I pulled them because I was hoping that there was a response to these four items, and they were brief and too, what do they mean? I'm sure somebody took notes.
If you would repeat C4?
C4?
Yeah.
C4. Yeah. I'm understanding that the biannual organizational meetings perhaps is the same thing as an election cycle, but I'm under assumption.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Question on number five was what constituted the emergency? Is the water main break?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
As to C5, what constituted the emergency was there was underground work occurring right around Hospira Road in Jasmine, and a contractor, private contractor, not our contractor, hit a water pipeline. And of course, the water pipeline, there was a loss of a great volume of water, did tremendous damage, not only to the underground, but also to the road. So an emergency order was issued pursuant to the provisions of our municipal code, where I'm allowed to declare an emergency so long as that emergency is ratified. And that process was followed. The ratification was actually undertaken by the council at a previous council meeting. So therefore, this item is really just dealing with the notice of completion, approving the completion of that work. That job is now done and will actually likely be pursuing recovery of those funds lost associated with our repairs.
So if you just can provide me in my inbox and an email, the ratification process that we went through, that's particularly what I was looking at.
I believe it's actually laid out in the discussion section, but we can articulate it differently if you like. Discussion section of the staff report, I think it covers it. But we can do something special if you like.
No, it's not special. In the past, we haven't abided by the process. And just to keep it safe, I was making sure that that process this time around actually took place. I know you were formally new, and I was just making sure that that was still there. And you said you did. That's all I was making sure. And then for C9, we're talking about three officers dealing with 125,000 residents. That was a little bit concerning to me. And so I was seeing if we had a cost-benefit analysis, or were we partnering with organizations?
Councilmember Gomez, I will quickly answer the question on C10, because that was an easy one. And then I will have the, I will attempt to answer the majority of C9, and I can actually have the animal control supervisor supplement that. Your question on C10, I believe, was related to the numerous bar graphs that were included in the report, correct?
Yes, for interpretability.
I understood your question to be, is to further explain or answer why the bar charts are there in the, in the report?
Yeah, to contextualize what these bars are interpreted as.
Okay. So there are several within that report, and what they're trying to show graphically, but they are also supplemented numerically, you know, and labeled, is the year-over-year change. So, for example, if you are on the page 183 of your agenda, you'll see the comparison for a year's time period of 2018, single-family residential new construction permits issued in the lighter color, and I'm sorry, because it's in black and white. So the lighter color, you'll get to see all of the 2018 bar graphs as compared, just depicted graphically against 2017. But you can also see the numbers, just to make it a little easier. So that's the same answer throughout that whole report. Or as to your questions on C9, you are correct, there are three officers, as the report states. There is also an animal control supervisor. His name is Mr. Michael Cathcart. I'll invite him up now. I do realize this is the first time in many, many years that the council would have seen an animal care and control activity report. It is something new that we are implementing to keep the council aware of what type of animal care and control activity is going on. So it's a new report. It covers the whole 2018. You asked about what kind of costs are involved, if we've measured the cost of the animal care control versus those statistics. We have not. Basically, our budget allows currently for three officers, and the 9,000 calls that you see on the report was covered by those three officers, as well as the animal control... control supervisor. He can speak a little bit about our VVAPL partnership, that's the one partnership that would be relevant here.
Yes, good evening, council, it's a pleasure to be here before you, Happy New Year. With regards to number of animals euthanized, I would have to get that number for you because our contract shelter does not only euthanize animals from City of Victorville, but they also contract with the City of Adelanto, and I would have to get those numbers to you, and it shouldn't take us long to do that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. In terms of that question, I'm really looking to see more of a budget finances, if our performance budget, our performance-based budgeting would be something that we can implement to really see how the program is affecting per-service unit. And so this is just me trying to understand, but I know there's nothing in play and it's something new.
Yes, yes.
So, this is just a comment now then.
Well, I understand your comment, but let me emphasize that the three animal control officers that work in the field do a fantastic job. As you can see, we do serve 74 square miles and 125,000 people. It's a dangerous job, and it's not really a job, it's a lifestyle, because these officers have to, not only when they do their full nine-hour shift, someone is answering the calls after hours. So it's a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, it's an arduous task, and I think they're doing a fantastic job, and one of the great things about it is that we, our three officers are healthy, so they haven't been hurt on the job, and I think that says a lot to their professionalism and their safety. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. You have a fantastic evening.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, a motion to approve items C4, C5, C9, and 10.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now I move on to written communications. Item D1, agreement with Inland County's Emergency Medical Agency. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the agreement between the Inland County's Emergency Medical Agency and the City of Victorville Fire Department.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions of staff, two-minute time limit? Any questions?
Yes, Madam. Okay, go ahead. Thank you very much. First of all, I'm, this item is so interesting to me when I heard more about it, and I'm wondering, Mr. Messler, if you could share with us an overview of the proposed relationship between ISMA and the City of Victorville? And if you'd also briefly describe the pilot program referred to on pages 1 and 2?
I would, but I wouldn't do it justice, so I would actually either punt to George or Greg, as they're the ones that are much more knee-deep in this. Greg?
Well, Madam Mayor and council, the agreement with ISMA is that ISMA-X is the regional representative of the state EMS system, and they are the organization that provides the accreditation and the certification for our paramedics. So it's through this agreement that we will be able to provide the advanced life support services and basic life support services for the community.
And then can you tell us about the pilot program that is referred to on pages, the end of page 1 and beginning page 2?
We, excuse me, we are exploring with ISMA not only priority dispatch, but also some community paramedic approaches, all that to bring the response volume down, also to help the hospitals in their issues of what they call bed delay. So, this is a proactive approach, and ISMA has been searching for a partner to participate in these pilot programs. We have, along with Chino Valley Independent Fire District, have indicated an interest in participating with them, and so that's the long-term intent. So we'll, instead of just being reactive when somebody calls 911, we'll look to do some proactive programming within the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, so, this is, I know we're on item D1, but I'm assuming in reading D1 through D7, that they're all about the fire department, right? Items D1 through D7, is that correct? So I don't have to say every question every single time for each item, I'll just say that question once, so if it is, I can summarize it here. Is that a yes, Mr. Harris? Yes, nod. Okay, thank you. So, I noticed that, just like with D1 and all the rest, I don't have a running total of the cost that's placed under the approved budget for the items that were placed. So, I don't know if staff is ready to provide a sheet and explain it. If not, I'm gonna be requesting that the city manager please have a sit-down, so we can talk about and look at the approved budget and how each budget minuses each item, because if you look at other items, the financial status is not filled out, which makes me assume that there is no budget for that, so where is it coming from? And those two questions, I will address when we come up to them, but for the items D1 through D7, it's the same thing. I'd like to have the running total for the budget and be seeing the subtraction, so that I can see the monies that allotted for each item as we keep expending them.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, we certainly can do that, and we intend to do that as a part of our ongoing mid-year budget review. We've just literally closed out December to get a good six-month total, and staff is actively working on a mid-year review right now, and believing that there's gonna be a need to make some adjustments. I think certainly we can capture your, the answer to your question through that mid-year budget process. What we do have before you is our standard format, where you do see a budget versus the project cost, so this is taken straight from the budget as it currently exists. It does not provide that running total, that's not a part of our standard format, but that's what effectively we can communicate to the council as a part of the mid-year review.
So I'm gonna be requesting before the mid-year review to have a sit-down with you and particularly go through it as this has been approved or continues to be approved, because I like to be on time with things, and I know I'm following a process, so Mondays at 9:15 or thereafter, I'd like to have an explanation about this further. And if you could, please let me know how you'll be proceeding with my request, I would appreciate that. That's my question for this item and all D1 through D7.
Anyone else have any questions? Question? No? Okay, at this time, I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, in good consciousness, I can't vote for something unless I know specifically that it has been budgeted. Was item D1 budgeted already? I'm gonna take your word for it, if it was.
Looking at the staff report, right there on the fiscal section would be the place, well, D1, there's no budget associated with this one, this is just a contract.
Okay, okay, okay. So, thank you for that clarification, so I'm ready to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, agreement with California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the mutual aid agreement with the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, with zero financial impact.
Thank you. Again, councilmembers, questions of staff, two-minute time limit? Ms. Ramirez, you have anything? Ms. Jones?
No, thank you.
No? Jim?
No.
Gomez?
I'm gonna get clarification, I heard the city clerk said with zero financial impact, so as a contract, this has no money, no monetary attachment to it, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, we can make a motion in a second at this time.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agreement for mutual aid between California Department of Forestry and CAL FIRE and the City of Victorville.
I second it. Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, agreement with San Marino County Information Services Department. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the five-year contract ISD-18001 for communication system access and radio equipment maintenance with county ISD for a five-month prorated amount of $19,929 for the first fiscal year, and a five-year total amount of $239,148, and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the contract.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions of staff? Two-minute time limit?
So we are on the approve of five-year contract with the county for systems to access 800 megahertz radio communication system? Yes, okay. So, for this one, I don't see any adjustments, but not saying that probably financing didn't go through the adjustments, but they're just not implicit, they're not explicitly stated, so I'm going to assume that there are no adjustments, and this is part of the budget, is that correct?
For the current fiscal year, the 1992/9, that's for the current fiscal year, and that's the fiscal year that we're operating out of. We can't presuppose at this point the future years, but this contract effectively does have pricing for forward years. When we get to those years and start requesting budget approvals, when it comes to the line item, dealing with this particular item, you can expect to see these dollar amounts carrying forward in those respective fiscal years.
Okay, so, I'm going to rephrase it, so I make sure I'm understanding what you're saying and what I said. So, as we see this, there are no adjustments to this agenda, which we already adopted. What I don't want to adopt is something that we haven't pre-budgeted, but I understand that you're saying we're gonna be seeing the same numbers come in the next years, but we only have a five-year allotment that we had, we were gonna contract or do something like that. So once again, it's just, I don't want to approve something in my right consciousness that was not already pre-budgeted.
So...
Okay, got it, so Harris is saying it's exactly what I'm repeating, so I appreciate you don't need to explain further, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, thank you.
Anyone else? I do not have any speaker cards. So at this time, we need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, purchase agreement for extrication and rescue equipment. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the purchase agreement with fire service specification and supply in an amount not to exceed $87,725.69 for hydraulic and electric rescue tools to provide for the rescue needs of the Victorville Fire Department.
Thank you. Any questions of staff at this time, by any council member?
So this was the particular one where I'm looking at the financial use, it's just approved, but there is no additional appropriations or additional revenues, and so that is something that I look at when I'm voting as well, so we're gonna say this is inside the budget. Is that a correct assumption or interpretation?
Yes.
Thank you. No further questions?
Anyone else? No?
I do not have any speaker cards, therefore, we can take, I can take a motion in a second.
I move approval of the staff recommendation to purchase, for purchase agreement for extrication and rescue equipment not to exceed $87,725.69, and note that this is a project budgeted item.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D5, purchase of two Zoll X Series cardiac monitors. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the purchase for two Zoll X Series cardiac monitors with associated accessories from Zoll Medical Corporation in an amount not to exceed $63,827.70.
Thank you. Any questions of staff by councilmembers? No? I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion in a second.
Move approval of staff recommendations to purchase two Zoll X Series cardiac monitors.
Second.
I second it.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments?
This is a budgeted project item?
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D6, purchase of uniforms for fire department personnel. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the piggyback purchase of initial uniform items for fire department personnel from two hot active wear and uniforms in an amount not to exceed $119,793.61, and as budgeted for in the adopted fiscal year 2018-2019 budget.
Thank you. Any questions?
From staff?
From councilmembers of staff? Any questions? No? I do not have any speaker cards, therefore, we need a motion in a second.
I second it.
Madam Mayor, I move that we take action on this item in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Yes, now I need a second.
Yeah, but she was before the...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. So you second now?
Okay.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D7, blanket purchase authorization of fire safety equipment. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve a blanket purchase authorization of fire safety equipment from Allen, Curtis, and Sons through the Cooperative Purchasing Program, NPP GOV, for an amount not to exceed $745,185, as budgeted for in the adopted fiscal year 2018-2019 budget.
Thank you. Any questions from councilmembers of staff?
Yeah, this is for item D7. What's the purpose of the Cooperative Purchasing Program, NPP GOV, and how has the city used it in relation to its city needs? And the second question is, please define the term blanket purchase, and make sure we're not writing a blank check.
Yes, Madam Mayor, city council, answer that question, the piggyback purchase, I'm sorry, let me go back. The blanket purchase authorization, so Allen &amp; Curtis is an actual vendor that sells multiple pieces of equipment and protective gear for fire service, for the fire service, for police service, and therefore. As we evaluated multiple retailers that provide all the same types of equipment and pieces of uniform and protective, in essence, equipment that we need to purchase, Allen &amp; Curtis was able to provide us the largest discount, as long as we participated in the Cooperative Purchasing Program provided by the NPP GOV program. And so with that, we'd like the opportunity to create a blanket purchase requisition with them, given that they're providing us the largest discount, to order all of the things that we need, that's been identified through the original plan, that can be sourced to this one particular vendor, if that makes sense.
So in other words, blanket purchase is...
A blanket purchase gives us an opportunity, because we've actually priced out all of the items that we need to purchase from them, as part of the original plan that was created a year and a half ago, they've given... As part of the original plan that was created a year and a half ago, they've given us competitive pricing. However, the timing of that purchase is going to happen over the next two months as we size up the department better. So, it's going to give us an opportunity to actually use this blanket authorization to not have to come back to the council for every little transaction. We can actually purchase all of our protective gear, which is on its way, as well as some other pieces of equipment that we're going to need between now and March, without having to keep coming back to the council for every small transaction. And so, in essence, you're authorizing that amount, and that amount is very, very specific at seventy-four, seven forty-five, one eighty-five, because we've actually priced those pieces, but we kind of have to wait for all of the guys to get here to where we can get them sized appropriately.
And the other question is, you don't have an item list of what it is, and I'm assuming that only what we're going to purchase with, for the fire department is fire department necessities or things that would help efficiently protect our community, but there's no list.
No, there absolutely is a list.
Oh, in the agenda?
There's actually, there's, actually, let me open that here. So, we've identified on the staff report...
Okay, so, the brands and the product descriptions, it's basically the resources that this company has that potentially we may need that would allow for the blanket check to be written or...
That's correct.
Cooperation, okay, got it, thank you.
Anyone else?
If I can add on, just until we actually receive the apparatus from County Fire to know what's on it and what's not on it, we don't know exactly which one of these items we're going to need to purchase in a short amount of time. And so, the idea is get a blanket authorization now, so that when we actually can do that evaluation over the next couple of months, we actually have the authorization to buy what we need.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have one.
And I'll direct it to Mr. Harris, if I may, Mr. Metzler.
Thank you. So, with regard to the blanket purchases, is it a fair statement to say that this is a reasonably common practice when you have matters like this in order to make sure that our operations are efficient?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, I move that we, the council, take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
I second it.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D8, Purchase of Anelgen CNG Crosswind J Sweeper. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council award hacker equipment as authorized distributor, the piggyback purchase of an Aegling CNG Crosswind J Sweeper in the amount of three hundred eighty-four thousand thirty-five dollars under the Sourcewell, formerly National Joint Powers Alliance, contract number 122017-FSC, and as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2018-2019 CIP budget.
Thank you. Our council members, any questions of staff at this time? I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion in a second.
I make a motion to follow the staff's recommendation set forth in the item, in the agenda item.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D9, Payment to San Bernardino County Transportation Authority for La Mesa Road and Esquali Road Interchange. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council authorize staff to pay the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority one million five hundred thousand for the city's share of the construction cost of the I-15 La Mesa and Esquali Road interchange from the Road Service Development Impact Fee Fund Number 352.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members of staff at this time?
Up to date, how much money has been paid to the county? How much money is left after today's payment? And what was the total cost of the interchange? So, before, now, and after?
There's only one payment of one...
I'm sorry. As far as the amount that has been paid to the county on this, if I understand the question correctly, the principal was ten million dollars, and with one point nine remaining after we pay this one point five, that tells me that about three point four, so, let's call that six point six is what's been paid, six point six million. Not a math major, but I think that's pretty close. As to the total cost for the La Mesa and Esquali interchange project, I believe that's, am I seeing it right there on the staff report? Total final construction cost was forty million, forty point five million dollars.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions? No? I do not have any speaker cards. So, we can have a motion in a second.
Move approval as recommended by staff.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
D10, Cal Recycle Waste Tire Enforcement Grant Application. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve Resolution Number 19-003, authorizing the city manager or his or her designee to submit an application for a Cal Recycle Waste Tire Enforcement Grant and execute all grant-related operations.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? I do not have any speaker cards, therefore, I need a motion in a second.
I move staff recommendation that's set forth in the agenda item. I make a motion... I made a motion to push forth a recommendation set forth by this agenda item.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I defer to Councilmember Cox.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D11, did I skip or I'm correct now? I got confused. I'm okay. D11, Update of City Council Policy for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Home Investment Partnership Home in the Cal Home Program, Fund Distribution and Administration, and Councilmember Appointment to the Grant Subcommittee. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt...
I'd like to nominate myself.
Let her read, please.
That the city council adopt the Second Amendment to City Council Policy Number CP-94-4 as proposed, and appoint two city council members to serve on the grant subcommittee.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time?
I would like to nominate myself for the...
I'm asking question... I'm sorry, let me stay aligned here. Are there any questions at this time regarding the appointments?
Yes. Why wasn't this appointment done during the process of appointing all the other committees and for the city manager? If there's a copy or a process that has rules, regulations, any policies or codes that govern the process for appointing council committee appointments, I would definitely like to have that in-hand hard copy in email format. So, my question was...
Yeah, I can address that. So, this is a little bit different than a standard committee, it is a subcommittee. It would be made up of two of the council members that would recommend to the council how to spend our CDBG funds. So, what's before you tonight is two actions. First, updating the policy to memorialize how we go about administering the subcommittee and what staff, what staff can do administratively to shift some of the unused funds to some of the previously approved subrecipients. So, that's the first component of this item, is just to first address the policy and memorialize kind of how we've been processing the subcommittee and its recommendations over the past few years. And then, secondly, is the nomination of the subcommittee members.
Okay, so, you said standing committee versus what type of committee?
This is a subcommittee.
Subcommittee. And then, is it a new process that we're implementing, or is something procedural that we go through the appointments with the subcommittees? Because to change a policy in my mind triggers something new versus the standard way of doing something.
Councilmember, Councilmember Gomez, if I might, the appointment that's being suggested tonight in this staff item is similar to how we've done it in the past, to where we've always done it immediately following the application cycle for CDBG. Certainly, we can treat it differently for future appointments that coincide when we do the biennial appointments to committees, but in this particular case, we didn't. This is just our traditional way of handling this particular item, because it's an internal committee, not one of the external committees.
Thank you. No further questions?
I do not have any speaker cards. Oh, you do. I do have one. I do have one speaker card. Andraletta Charbonnet. I do not have any speaker cards. So, at this time, I need, well, let's see here.
The nominations.
The nomination, okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, there are two recommendations for this particular item, and I think it might be helpful if we were to split this into two separate motions. So, at this point, I would like to move that we separate the recommendations into two parts, handling point one first with a motion and a vote.
It is two separate ones, so, Madam Clerk, can I take the first one, adopt the Second Amendment to the City Council?
The first one's adopt the Second Amendment to City Council Policy Number CP-94-4 as proposed.
So, I'm taking that as a single item?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm taking item number one, and I need a motion and a second on that one.
I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda under point one.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we are taking item number two, appoint two city council members to serve on the grant, grant subcommittee. Previously, it has been Mayor Garcia and Eric Negretti that sit in as the two council I want to nominate myself to continue on, but we do need two.
Madam Mayor, it would probably be best if you took a nomination and voted on that, and then took a second nomination, because some members may want to approve one and not the other. That would give them...
So, at this time, just take the nomination for one?
Yes.
Okay.
And you've nominated yourself, so you should...
Yes, I nominated myself, so...
Can I nominate myself, Dr. Ramirez?
I will second the nomination of Mayor Garcia to set on this.
And I would nominate Mayor Protem Ramirez.
We should take the vote on the first nomination and then take the second nomination, because it might confuse people.
It is confusing, so, we're just taking the one first for me. Did you second it, Jim?
Yes, I did.
Okay. The motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are all those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now, we will take the second nomination now.
I nominate Mayor Protem Ramirez.
This is the nomination. I nominate myself.
No, second it, she nominated you.
Thank you. Thank you, Blanca.
So, you have...
I second it.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, of course, I was not here, this is... Now, we move on to our public comments. And did you want to read the statement?
This is a time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 549, 54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting.
Thank you. The first card that I have is Roger LaPlante. Is he still here? He left? Oscar Tejeda, and after Oscar, Raul Rodriguez.
Okay, this is the city clerk can just note that he was...
Oscar Tejeda left?
Yeah.
Raul Rodriguez, I guess he left?
Good evening again, city council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Again, my name is Kim Ammerman, and this time I stand in front of you to speak as the administrator of my medical group, which has several offices located in downtown Victorville. Today, I'd like to address the lack of support and priority for the ever-increasing transient population of the downtown Victorville area. One of my physicians addressed the city council several times last year with various complaints about property destruction, illegal camping slash squatting on our properties, and the amount of constant trash removal from the street people slash transients that are causing to our organization. For those of you who are unaware of our organization, not only do we support the local community with our tax dollars, but we belong to several community organizations in addition to providing a community garden to educate our residents on the importance of food combined with cooking classes and disease management education. We do all this for our residents free of charge, and every dime that we have wasted in the maintenance of the transient issue is a dime we could have spent on positive programs for our community. The last time that we addressed the concerns to the city council was August 21st, 2018, where several council members agreed that there was also a problem, and we decided to do a work group, and that was to be generated at a later date, which we would be advised of. Also, during this meeting, the city manager, Keith Metzler, had given us his business card and wrote on the back of it for us to call his office, which we did the very next day. day, only to be put off by his administration, which we then had to educate and stress the severity of our situation to get our point across. We had a few more phone calls and updates over the next month about how we were having internal meetings and when this work group was going to transpire. We were told repeatedly that this was an internal process, which was not yet open for general population, and that they would notify us. Today, this morning, actually, I received an email from the city of Victorville letting us know that this month, we would now actually have this meeting transpire, which is officially six months after we actually brought this to the last meeting in August. During this time, this past six months, these transient slash...
You have thirty seconds.
...have burned down our palm trees, broke into our facility multiple times, and we are here just to say that we are disappointed at the length of time it has taken us to get even to this point where we can actually have a scheduled gathering meeting to take input from the community. We hope that the council and our new council members can take this more to a higher level and support our city so that we can support our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Bell, and after Bruce will be Ramiro Rodriguez.
Hello, Mayor Garcia. Rest of City Council. I'm here to address the City Council. My name is Mr. Bruce Edward Bell. I'm the founder of the solar panel, and the first one to ever make the first solar panel known to man. Also the owner of El Jet Corporation, founder of BP Gas and Les Pools. Many, many years ago, I was working at El Jet, and we opened a church up here at 17288 Scotterdale Road here in Victorville. I had put Jamesy Markham in charge, which was the minister of the church at that time. Some kind of way, he had got the ownership changed over into his name. I'm lost out on ownership. And I also purchased a house with it for him to live on in Silver Lakes, California. Now, I live in Sacramento, but I'm here periodically because my mother and I were living here, and they are now deceased due to a home invasion where they accepted two injections from the people that were doing the home invasion, and they passed due to those home invasions. I have been writing several times to the Attorney General's Office in regards to this matter, and I can't get no type of response. I attended a meeting back in Washington DC back in the mid-'2000s, and Bill Clinton, Comely, Edward Snowden, before he defected, I met him at the El Jet because I was having problems there due to Markham. His real name is Tim Windrow, by the way. And he had told me that I hadn't sold none of my businesses, none of my investments, but they were being taken. So I admitted that they were being taken at that time, and I was housed there in Washington DC. They allowed me to come back and try to square this up with the city here in Victorville and Sacramento, and I can't seem to get Markham to be coherent with me. He admits that he knows the church is mine, but he also admits that it's some form of mafia involved in it, and that he would love to sign the church back over to me, but he is scared to. Then, if he says he signs it back over, he wants out of the ministry. So I told him, okay, sign the church back over to me. He refused to do so, and he's been giving me to run around for the last, what, ten, nine, ten years? So every time I write to the Attorney General's Office about it, I get no response. But there, at the Department of Justice in Washington DC, where they hold all sales and final documents on every land transaction and business sales throughout the country, they have not got any report where I have sold any of my businesses. And I don't know what else to do.
You have thirty seconds.
So I'm addressing the City Council here in Victorville, and Police Captain Rick, I left one of your officers a pamphlet with his name and some false documents that he had made up on his schooling and teaching and whatnot. I've been knowing for years. Thank you.
Ramiro Rodriguez.
I'd like to take a moment to thank everybody for the job they're doing to a certain point. I just listened to a person state how it took six months for the city to get back to her on a situation with the homeless situation, which they're also involved in helping that situation. But it took ten days, eight days, for this City Council to approve $532,000 for the golf course to be approved once again, which affects 680 people that live around the golf course, which we, all of us, are paying $44,000 a month for this monster. This Blockbuster, what is it, Blockbuster Video Store? Or what is it called? The Green Tree Golf Course? That's approximately $10,000 a week. That would supply seventeen teachers, seventeen teachers a month for this city. And the thing is, we stated that we could, there's a solution for this. Those 680 houses that are around the golf course would only cost those people living there $64 a month. That's it. Association dues of $64 a month would alleviate $44,000 a month to fix the homeless situation, to fix the daycares, to fix the senior care. That's $44,000 that I see we're being wasted. That could be, I don't see no problem with the people living there paying $64. And then, really, really, those people, once they pay that money, they're going to investigate why those fields are always yellow, why it's such an ugly golf course. I've seen beautiful golf courses. I've golfed before, but that one, I don't think, to me, it's worth $44,000 a month. From the $1.2 million we're paying, the city is paying. So on my behalf, on my hand, I'm saying, why did it take eight days to alleviate that problem and six months to answer the lady that wants to settle something with the homeless people? And homeless situation is a country, is a national problem, not just Victorville. They have them in Beverly Hills if you go there shopping. So the thing is, we have to really assess our resources where we're using all our money. You know, Bezzel's from Amazon right now, trillionaire, $160 billion, he's fighting with the city of New York to get a $500 million grant so he can build his warehouse there. He wants money from the city, a billionaire. So what Bill Simmons says, you know what? Let the billionaires build their own stadiums. And you know what? Let the people living there, they're millionaires or whatever they are, have them pay $64 and alleviate those $44,000 a month that we're spending on that golf course. Thank you very much.
One more card. Hakeem? Sorry, I won't even attempt to say your last name, but I'll let you do it.
How you guys doing? My name is Hakeem G. Senior, and I'm a homeowner here. I've been here for seven years, or eight, one of those things. But what I want to talk to you about first is to say how impressed I am with the young people that were sitting here earlier today. I mean, either they, I mean, you could agree with them or disagree with them, but the fact that they were here, they spoke, I mean, I salute them. That took courage, and I respect that. Then, the second thing I want to talk to you about is I want you to know that, you know, we're in January, and what we should be thinking about right now is summer. I'm talking recreation programs for our kids. We should be having a recreation, if we don't, we could have a recreation plan. Summer comes every time, and I don't know if we are really prepared for the youth, for the youth adult classes and the pool, but one of the things that really, I think, goes together is the police department and the recreation department. The two are really joined at the hip, if you really think about it. One of the things I'd love to see is a recreation plan where the cost of these recreation programs are lower, because what good is having a good program? You know, good baseball, soccer, basketball program, preschool, Pee-wee, soccer, whatever program, but the people who needs it, who wants it, can't reach it. So let's look at trying to lower the prices of these programs. I know that the city could do that. I know that the city manager and the community of development or the community services department can do it. I used to serve as an advisory, on the advisory committee, of the community services advisory committee for Victorville. So, but I want to see the prices lowered down a little bit so that we could reach them. And I'd also like to see a plan that's going to engage these kids. Maybe that's the movies. Maybe it's something else, but let's have a plan so when they get out of school, they're not getting into trouble. They've got something to go to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I did receive one email for public comment. I received an email from Alejandro Diaz today that will be added to the record.
Thank you. Now, we move on to, those were all the cards that I had. So now, we move on to reports from our city manager.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, a few items worth taking note of. First, this coming Monday, January 21st is MLK Day, and as we do annually, there'll be a civil rights memorial plaque unveiling. It's put on, sponsored by Delta Beta Theta Sorority Peace March. That's actually what it's called. And that'll actually be occurring right out here in front of City Hall from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. So certainly would encourage everybody to come out for that. We'll actually have road closures along Civic from Seneca to Ramona. We've got a Friends of the Library event on Wednesday, January 23rd, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. This is a book sale, so be an opportunity to get some books, probably real cheap. One of the promotions they have is fill a bag for $5. There's a Victorville Residential Irrigation System Basics Workshop on Saturday, January 26, 2019, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM here at City Hall, and it's a free event. It's an opportunity for attendees to learn how to convert their existing pop-up spray systems to drip irrigation. There's also a free Shred Fest and mulch giveaway, Saturday, February 2nd, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's at the Murph. A couple of project updates. The Rubbermaid expansion is moving along fairly well. We're actually envisioning the building being complete in March, so more to come on that. We'll continue to update you of the progress. Village Drive is substantially complete. There's some little minor items. The striping was one of the last ones completed. Railings and things like railings are last to be completed on that. And then, finally, we've heard about the homeless workshop being asked about, and in fact, we have coordinated with you as a council to conduct that workshop on Tuesday, January 29th, 2019, at 3:00 PM here at City Hall. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, we move on to E3, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Items for the Upcoming City Council Agenda.
I'll start with Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a request for an agenda item for February 5th to present my nominees to the council and to seek appointment confirmation for the Planning Commissioner, the Community Services Advisory Committee, as well as the Legislative Review Committee.
Is that all you have?
That's the only one I'm requesting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I would like to put on the next agenda two items for consideration and discussion.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, might we have a motion on my request? And devote, thank you.
I have a motion by...
I'm sorry, I made the motion, so let me formally make the motion as I just stated it, that I am, for an agenda item.
Correct.
Just for the nominations for vacancies that were made.
For the Planning Commission and the two committees.
And I would like to modify hers to include mine as well.
I think we need to take hers first.
Well, unless the moving party would accept the modification of the motion.
Okay, so you're doing that a little differently than I'm used to typically. If there's an amendment, there's a vote on the amendment, and then you go, and then whether that becomes included in the main motion. So I'll defer to whatever the...
Did I hear a second, though, from Mr. Cox?
Yes, Mr. Cox seconded.
On mine? Or the...
I heard a second to Councilmember Deborah Jones's motion.
So, as a point of order, I like clarification on that.
On what?
On the modification of adding to what she is already asking so that I can nominate...
My understanding of the rules of order is that the modification has to be accepted.
Okay, so was it...
Any motion modification has to be accepted by the moving party.
Okay, so then, I want to know if the motion was accepted, yes or no, just for the record.
I heard a motion, and I heard a second from Councilmember Cox. So I believe the appropriate next step would be to take the vote.
Are you the attorney?
No, I'm not the attorney, but I am just speaking from my understanding and passage of practice and experience.
So I'm deferring to the attorney and to legal authority here.
I've already stated, my belief is to the rule, which is that the only way that you can amend the motion is if the moving party accepts the amendment and the second re-seconds. So since that hasn't occurred, unless it, somebody intends to, then we should move forward with the vote on the original motion.
There was a motion?
So for the record, I still needed a response, whether it's a yes or a no.
We're taking Ms. Jones.
I think an absence of response is a no.
So I'm going to take that for the record to be a no.
I'm just a little taken aback because this isn't how I'm accustomed to doing Rosenberg's Rules of Order on this, but absolutely, I will defer to you on this matter. My understanding at this point is that because I made the motion and Councilmember Cox seconded it, that we can go ahead and move forward with that vote, and that's what I would...
Yes.
...like to see. Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Rita?
For the upcoming City Council Agenda, I would like to make a motion to have a discussion with the possible action regarding two items. The first is the exploratory discussion on the establishment of a high desert state university. My second item for the motion, and I'm assuming this is going to be done separately, the second would be a review of the City Council and the Planning Commission stipends, which have not been reviewed since 2006.
Okay, so I'll take them separately. The first one was motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez to have discussion regarding a university. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The second one is to review City Council and Planning Commission stipends. That was motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez. Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
Did you have anything else?
I have no items.
Gomez?
Yes, as Councilmember Jones had requested to have her Planning Commissioner appointed February 5th, that's my same request for me to have someone appointed for February 5th. I'm sorry, that's a motion.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez. All those in favor?
Question?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Any questions?
Yeah.
Comments? Sorry.
There's a request for Ms. Ramirez to make an appointment, but there's already an individual in that position. So you don't have a vacancy, so you'd have to remove the individual first. That requires a council action. Would the appropriate action be for the City Council to consider removing the Planning Commission at first?
That is correct.
As a comment, me being here two years ago, that's not how it functioned with Mayor Gloria Garcia or yourself, so if that were the case, that would show partisanship. It would be showing that just because I'm trying to do something, it would be different than every other council member for the last two years. But you can go ahead and said that as long as it's in the record.
I'm not saying anything for the record. The rules are that the City Council members nominate an individual, the City Council appoints. The City Council appointed the individual who's serving. Unless that individual resigns or is replaced, there's no vacancy.
Can you cite your authority, rules, and regulations to what you're saying?
Don't be silly.
I need to have documentation of that, unless it's personal opinions. Thank you.
I do have a comment, if I may. I just, I want to understand, and I want to be as respectful as I can as to what the normal process is here. It's my understanding that when a person is a...
It's my understanding that when a person is elected to office, they then have the ability to nominate a person to the Planning Commission and two other committees subject to appointment confirmation by the council. And that if that appointment occurs, it's at the pleasure of the entire council and it's coterminous with the nominating party. So I don't, it doesn't appear to me at least, that the council is moving or looking to move to replace any any Planning Commissioner. And it would seem to me that that would be the decision first to make, is the council moving to remove a certain Planning Commissioner. If that decision is made or not made, then that tells us how to move forward. That's my understanding.
Councilmember Jones, I appreciate your opinion. Coterminous with the elections is a personal opinion. It has no cited authority, rules, or regulations. So once again, that would be a biased partisan way of thinking about something like that, only in turn- no offense, I'm not trying to offend you. I'm trying to state that what we have set pre-pattern since 1962 with me has changed. But we will show that, as long as we put that in the court doc, in the- in our actual archives. And that's what we're trying to show today. So I appreciate your comment. It's very greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, adding to Councilmember Jones's comments, which I think she was on the precise path of the governing authority regarding Planning Commissioners, which is actually defined in Section 2.12.020, defining the terms of Planning Commissioners. And then 2.12.060 actually has provisions that speak specifically to the removal of Planning Commissioners, all to be done by the body of this council. So, and I think that applies particularly to your request, Councilmember Gomez, as to the authority. It's not opinion, this is actually city laws, city code.
I would appreciate if you send that over my way through an email and we will have interpretation on that as legal representation would take that to interpret that. So I appreciate if you send that over my way.
We have, and we can do it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're back to-
So my motion still stands. If there's no second, we were there.
Yeah, your motion is what?
My motion is the same, to be able to appoint a Planning Commissioner for February 5th. And that's a motion. We can just go through the procedures, which-
So then point of order, that would technically be out of order based on what was just cited to the full council in terms of the terms of Planning Commissioners and how they're to be removed.
As a point of order, that is in order because we're adding our agenda items and we are currently on that particular item. And I have the right and the privilege to make something go on to the agenda, so I'm on point.
Madam Mayor, is my point well taken? Is my point well taken? I raised a point of order, is it well taken? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
For clarification, when a person makes a motion, they have a right to have a second for a vote to be taken. That vote is based on individual decisions. Because there is a second does not justify or verify that it's going to pass. But whoever makes a motion should have the right to have a vote taken. It's not that you agree or disagree when you make a second. It is the right of the person who made the motion to have a vote taken. That is my clarification on my second.
Yeah, there's a motion and there's a second, so I call the question, and there must be a vote. So it needs to be called out. That's Rosenberg rules.
And I would like to make a further clarification, as we do follow Rosenberg's Rules of Order. There is no such information found within that or in our Procedures Manual that mandates that a second must be made. There is no such right. If a second is not made, the motion dies, as is would be indicated in Rosenberg's Rules of Order.
The second was already made?
Yes, it was on this. Thank you.
So we need a call for the vote, because there's a motion and a second. I appreciate it.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez.
Request a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Yeah, your name.
What did you-
I requested a roll call vote on this issue.
Oh, I see. Okay.
On Councilmember Gomez's motion, which was seconded. So that's the roll call.
Mayor Garcia? No. Councilmember Cox?
No.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No.
Motion fails.
The second item that I'd like to bring is translation services in City Hall for the community.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear-
Translation services in City Hall for our community members.
That's your motion, Councilmember?
Yeah, that would be my motion. Thank you.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
Did you have anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay, Jim? Have anything?
No.
Okay. I do. At the December 18, 2018, City Council meeting, we agreed to the appointment of council members to certain committees. After having reviewed the results, I am concerned about our appointment of Councilmember Gomez to two committees. Therefore, I am requesting an agenda item to discuss and possibly take action specific to her appointment to certain committees. And that's my motion for a future meeting, preferably our next meeting.
I will second for discussion purposes.
Motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further questions or comments?
Point of order, I'd like to understand why when I had the motion and the second, the city clerk failed and asked the legal attorney not, and they agreed not to, until I pushed. But this one was only seconded for a brief moment.
You're out of order, you're interrupting-
Why is that happening?
You are interrupting my-
I want to make sure that that's on the record.
You are interrupting my motion. We have a motion and a second. Need a vote.
I have a discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
The City Council is supposed to be working as a team to accomplish the business of the city. I don't know what, I don't know what committees Ms. Gomez is on. And at this point, I think that's probably irrelevant. The position of the city is what three councilmen say the position of the city is. If I disagree with that, nobody cares, because if I go to a committee meeting, I am required to follow the city policy. If I want to make an independent statement, I do so as a private citizen. But I'm not allowed to represent that, that's different from the city. We continually have this argument about, well, it's your opinion or so on. We have a policy. It's in the policy. I repeated the policy. I had no idea this was coming before the City Council. I don't want to see the City Council remove any council member, but I think that the council member that's on any committee has to agree to represent the city. And if they don't agree to represent the city, they're working against the city. If they're going to work against the city, they ought not be allowed to sit on any committee that represents the city of Victorville. I don't know how you resolve it, but that's my position. So if I seconded for discussion, there's plenty of time to put it on the council meeting at the next meeting and discuss. And if necessary, have the, you know, have the city attorney to come up with some language, you know. We take this office, we swear, we take the oath to affirm and uphold the laws of the city and the state of California. And that means we abide by the laws, we follow the policies of the city. We don't argue about it, we don't cause a problem at every opportunity. And we have very important committees where one person from this council goes to other agencies and represents the city. Yet if they're not willing to sign a paper and take a statement that they're going to represent the city, regardless of what their own opinion is, they ought not be appointed to the committee. And if they're on a committee, they ought to be removed. That's my statement. Now, if the City Council wants to approve this, but I wanted to make a statement before we call for the vote, and you're right, there's a motion and a second, but I'd like to hear from other council members, because this is kind of a drastic move, but it may be necessary.
Madam Mayor, I would point out, as a point of information, that the council policies on the appointments do indicate that appointments of council members to, as representatives of the city, in my view, that's a clear indication of the duty that is imposed upon the council members, which is to represent the city's position as determined by a majority of the council.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second.
I do have a question or two, if I may, Madam Mayor, just because I don't know what, to what specific committees the mayor was referring to, but clearly those motions passed. And so I understand that there's been a lot of difficulty in the past with certain behavior, indecorous behaviors. But this council spoke and voted for Councilmember Gomez to sit on certain committees. And I presume that she has accepted those positions, knowing that she is to represent the city. Would anything prevent the council from just moving forward and then should news come, and I hope that day never comes, that Councilmember Gomez isn't representing the city well in those, on those committees, and we could take action at that time?
My motion stands. I would like to agendize this. For further discussion at a later meeting?
I have a motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I apologize, I haven't responded yet.
Okay.
Because I think this is a very bold move.
It is for further discussion, I'm not making-
Yeah, and I think that's what's going to do it for me, since it's for discussion and no action. Okay.
It's a motion to place it on the agenda.
Or as a discussion item.
That-
Discussion and decision at a later time.
Yeah, the original motion didn't indicate discussion only. It was a motion to bring the matter for the council to consider. So, and I think the mayor's just indicated that she would contemplate action by the council at its pleasure and discretion. So if that affects your vote, then we should have that clear. This in itself is not-
I apologize. I just want to make sure-
They were not prepared to discuss anything about this tonight because you were not aware of it.
Of course, sure.
So that's why I want to agendize this.
Sure.
So that we can actually have time to look into it.
Okay, I'll agree to that.
And know the issues involved, and then we can-
My vote is aye.
Mayor Protem? Your vote?
I abstain.
Motion passes with Councilmember Gomez voting no, and Mayor Protem Ramirez abstaining.
Now we move on to item E4, before 10 o'clock, otherwise we have to go home. Reports from council members, three-minute time limit. I'll start with Ms. Jones.
Thank you, and I'm going to do this really fast because a lot has happened since our last meeting. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone, and we've just now concluded our first meeting of the year. I hope that as the days move forward, our meetings will only get better and better. While Victorville has a reason to stand up and give a shout out to the teenagers in our community, we have great teenagers in our community, and we saw a lot of them here tonight. They were engaged in our community, they were engaged in making sure that their voices are heard for their future. So hats off to them. I'm going to just run through this briefly. I've attended a lot of meetings. I serve on various boards as alternates, and they're complex boards with a lot of history. And so I'm really delving into that. And I thank you to Councilmember Cox and the city manager and others for educating me on a lot of the history of those boards. I've taken educational tours of SCLA, the IWWTP, and the Elavato Treatment Plant. And suffice it to say, I have learned much about water reclamation, treatment, and storage. I also was very fortunate to observe a service line replacement in a residential neighborhood. And I want to thank all of those, Mr. Metzler is part of your team, that really came alongside me to help school me in the things that are going to help me make better decisions in the days ahead. I've conducted candidate interviews for my nominees to the Planning Commission, Community Services Advisory Committee, and the Legislative Review Committee. And interviews will conclude this week. I attended the swearing-in ceremony for our re-elected county superintendent of schools, Ted Alejandre. This is a great man, a great leader, who, as he says, aspires to inspire, and that in itself is inspiring to me. Last Friday, a beautiful gala was held for Charlie and Evelyn Glasper. These are wonderful people who have served our communities for decades. And although I was unable to attend, I was certainly there with them in spirit and celebrating their good work for the people of our high desert. And today, I attended a luncheon put on by the Committee Resource Network. It was a great time to connect with local nonprofits who seek to serve the vulnerable in our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Ramirez?
First, I would like to say Happy New Year and hope this is a better year than last. But I would like to thank each and every one of you that came and spoke, and especially the people that we met with prior to this meeting, who spoke about their feelings regarding the sale of alcohol. Let me say that people matter, and that in regards to that, the more that you can participate, the better it is for us. And this last weekend, my three representatives were at a club meeting, and I presented them before the members of a club. And it is good and wonderful that the public should know who represents you. And they, all three spoke. And I think that it makes me realize how important it is to be a City Council member. And I want to thank you at the beginning of this year, and I will thank you in every single time I see you, because this is a wonderful, wonderful elective position that allows us to better the lives and qualities of our community. And I will hopefully will be seeing you on Monday at the dedication of Harriet Tubman plaque and at the peace march, because civil rights is number one, and without it, there is no freedom. And I thank you again for attending this meeting.
I'd just like to echo, excuse me, the thanks to everyone who gets involved, who comes to these hearings, and also who follows up and asks the many questions. Please be involved. We need your assistance, we need your input. Thank you for coming to this meeting. I have no further items.
Gomez?
So after various attempts and trying to communicate with the city clerk, says a resident by the name of Alejandro Diaz, by phone and not receiving a response, and after various calls and leaving messages, as well as in-person attempts, I am requesting from the City Council directly the following question, she says, "Is the city attorney being paid for in representing the accusation of harassment and abuse of power in a court case to Gloria Garcia, our city mayor? Again, I want to know if the City Council has indeed approved pay to the city attorney that comes from taxpayer contributions. As a concerned community member and as an advocate, I pose the question a different way, which has the same meaning, she says, "Is the city using our tax money?" Please refrain from beating around the bush- Please refrain from beating around the bush or indirectly not providing a concrete, explicit response, which is what I'm requesting from the city. In other words, she says, I'm requesting information and documentation that sounds, that shows if the city is paying the city attorney to represent Gloria Garcia-
Ms. Gomez?
-in the harassment case.
Ms. Gomez, this is reports from council members.
If the response is yes, it would be a misfortune, since the city community has other priorities to attend, such as senior care, student and veteran needs, homeless services, and so much more. I hope that the City Council would be more cognizant, compassionate and efficient when making decisions. Please read this into the record during the three-minute public comment loudly, she says, for the audience and the City Council to listen and to respond to, as well as to add this to today, to today's January 15, 2019 archives and agenda records in written hard copy for access to the public and future public record requests, inquiries. Regards, Alejandra Diaz. Specifically, in the past, we have read whoever sends something in email, but very particularly, this was not read, and I felt very important. That's why you see some of the retaliatory actions that are being taken here. I also remember seeing someone that speaks Spanish here, and I would like to translate a little bit of my feelings towards her being here. So please, please bear it's a sentence or two. Se que estás aquí y duraste unas tres, cuatro horas. Agradezco que estuvistes aquí. Sabemos que estamos trabajando duro para traer servicios de interpretación para que tú seas, participes y te sientas como que si estás en tu comunidad. Mientras seguimos trabajando, esperamos que tú sigas viniendo y vamos a estar aquí apoyándote, sea una persona o sean dos, pero sabes que tienes mi respaldo. Gracias. Thank you very much.
No other business before the council this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.